I will call to order the joint meeting of the Kattati City Council and the successor agency to the former Kattati Community Redevelopment Agency for Tuesday, April 11th. May I have a roll call, please? Councilmember Skilman?
Here.
Councilmember Deloso?
Here.
Mayor Harvey?
Here.
Vice Mayor Landman?
Here.
Councilmember Moore?
Here.
With that, will you all please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
(Inaudible)
Okay, so, we will move on to the approval of the minutes and notice of waiting of reading of all resolutions and ordinances introduced and/or adopted under this agenda.
So moved.
Seconded. I have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions?
Aye, abstain.
We have four yes and one abstain. With that, we will move on to the announcements. The City of Kattati has special open office hours on Monday evenings from 5:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. by appointment in the Community Development Department at City Hall as part of its Kattati Open for Business Program. This program provides personalized assistance and information to developers, current Kattati business owners, and those interested in starting a new business within the city. The Rona Park Kattati Regional Library hosts events for all ages including art exhibits, book clubs, and children's programs. All events are free and open to the public. For more information, call the library at (584) 9121 or visit www.sonomalibrary.org. The Kattati Historical Society Museum is open regularly the second Tuesday of each month from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. and Saturdays from 1:00 to 4:00 p.m. and by appointment. For more information, call (707) 794-0305. Citizens interested in receiving City of Kattati Community Alerts via text or email are encouraged to sign up at nixle.com, N-I-X-L-E dot com. The City offers a variety of recreational programs for all ages. See details on the web at kattatcity.org. Okay, so with that, we will move on to our honorary mayor, and that would be Angelina Singh of Thomas Page Academy. Please come forward, Angelina. It's okay, it won't be bad. Can you tell us a little bit about yourself?
I go to Thomas Page and I am really shy. I'm excited to come here.
Alright, well, wait, 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 not so fast. Alright, I'll start on this end. Questions for Angelina?
Sure.
So which grade are you in right now?
I'm in sixth grade.
Okay, very good. And are you, do you have a favorite subject? You can say recess if that's true.
English.
Very good. Okay, well, thank you very much for being here and being our honorary mayor, and I will pass it back down the line.
Hi Angie. Glad you made it up here. See, I told you it would be easy. So what interests do you have, say either like after school or, you know, when you're home with friends? What kind of, what's fun for you?
I like to scooter a lot.
Really? Okay. Different? I never heard that before, I like that. And have you ever done any kind of volunteer work for the city, like at maybe some of the events we have or even things at Thomas Page? Doesn't really matter if you say yes or no because I'm going to try to hook you into doing some of it. So you can answer either way, it's fine. But if, you know, it'd be really fun is if you and maybe some of your friends from school or even from your neighborhood, if you did some volunteer work because you're going to find out as you get like into high school and stuff, it becomes mandatory to do so many hours of community service is what it's called. And so why not start early? Maybe they'll let you check some of it off, you know, when you're in seventh or eighth grade. And we have a lot of events in town that we're always in need of having people come and help us out. So I know you understand the internet probably far better than I do, but if you go to the city's webpage, you'll see all the different events that go on throughout the year. So there's a lot of events and you can kind of pick and choose whatever you might be interested in, and we definitely would love to have you come and help us out for some of these events. Thanks for being here. Don't leave yet, but thanks for being here.
Vice Mayor?
Thank you. Welcome, Angelina. Well, I'm going to give you credit for somebody that's shy, it's really difficult to get up and do public speaking. And I guess I'm not telling you anything that's a surprise to you, am I? You kind of know that, huh? Yeah. Because it's not easy to do because you've got all to talk to, and then I don't want to make this more difficult, but if you turn around for a second, you've got a lot of people behind you too. But it's all pretty easy because I think everybody wants to see you do good. So I'm curious, what do you see in the future? It's really difficult at this age to ask people what they're going to do, but if you were to look at a range of things and somebody said, "You have to pick right now what your career is going to be," what do you think that would be?
Otometrist.
Otometrist, interesting. Particular reason that's interesting to you?
They pay a lot.
That's a darn good reason. You're a fine mayor. Thank you, Angelina. You're going to be good for the budget.
Councilmember Moore?
Angie, thanks so much for coming, we appreciate it. I've got a couple of quick questions for you. When you were approached by either the principal or your teacher to participate in the honorary mayor program, what did you think? What was your initial thought on there? Oh my god, really?
I was surprised.
Yeah. And do you know kind of what the honorary mayor program is all about? So it's really kind of an introduction to the community students to kind of let them know what happens in their community, how that process works, and it's just kind of an introduction to government. And I think sometimes when the superintendents or the principals or the teachers select students, a lot of times it'll be students that generally have an interest in that, but that's not something that you had broached yet or thought over or anything? Okay. And then I'm going to piggyback on what Councilmember Deloso talked about regarding community service hours. Each year we have an annual Kids' Day Parade. I don't know if you've ever participated in that or been part of the festivities for the Kids' Day?
I've heard about it. I was going to go, but I didn't go.
Well, next summer is our 25th anniversary of the Kids' Day, and the person that I had last year that was a senior at Ranch Kattati was kind enough to dress up in our Jelly Belly costume, so maybe that might be something you'd be interested in doing for us in the summer. Because you're the perfect size and age. And thank you for coming.
Angelina, do you have anyone to introduce that you brought with you?
I brought my dad.
And?
That's it.
I think someone else is with you too.
My principal, Ms. Peters.
There you go. Well, thank you for coming. We are going to ask that you talk to some of your friends and just talk them a little bit about what they like to do in Kattati, what things are obstacles for them, what things that they see that they could help with possibly. Just kind of give us a little bit of feedback by talking to your friends, so we'd appreciate that when you come back next time. And you can stay if you'd like, but we understand it's a school night. It would be nice if you could stay for a little bit, but if you can't, we absolutely understand, and thank you so much for coming tonight.
You're welcome.
Okay, with that, it'll be okay. We will move on. We have a proclamation. Proclamation of the City Council of City Kattati for Sexual Assault Awareness Month. Good evening, I will read this. Proclamation of the City of Kattati recognizing April 2017 as Sexual Assault Awareness Month. Whereas Sexual Assault Awareness Month is intended to draw attention to the fact that sexual violence is widespread and has a profound and lasting impact on every community member of Kattati, and whereas national research indicates that one in five women will be raped at some point in their lifetime, and nearly half of all women will experience some form of sexual violence, and whereas one in 17 men will be raped at some point in their lifetime, and one in five men will experience some form of sexual violence. Whereas young people are at greatest risk of sexual violence and youth aged 12 to 17 are two and a half times more likely to be raped or sexually assaulted, and whereas we must work together to educate our community about sexual violence prevention, supporting survivors, and speaking out against harmful attitudes and actions, and whereas with leadership, dedication, encouragement, there's evidence that we can be successful in preventing sexual violence in the City of Kattati through increased education, awareness, and community involvement. And whereas the City of Kattati strongly supports the efforts of Verity and encourages every citizen to actively engage in public and private efforts to end sexual violence, including conversations about what sexual violence is, how to prevent it, how to help survivors connect with crucial counseling and other support services, and how every segment of our society can work together to better address sexual violence, and whereas the City of Kattati reaffirms its commitment to address issues of rape and sexual violence by remembering victims, supporting survivors, holding perpetrators accountable for their actions, and challenging societal myths and behaviors that perpetuate sexual violence in our community. Now therefore, be it proclaimed on this 11th day of April by the City Council of the City of Kattati, that along with the United States Government and the State of California, the City of Kattati designates the month of April 2017 to be Sexual Assault Awareness Month. So, I would imagine you have a few words for us?
Absolutely. The first word to all of you council members, mayor, vice mayor, and staff is thank you. Because this is not easy to talk about. We may have a month every year that we designate, but it's still really difficult, and it's also still really important. Because when we talk about these issues, we take them out of the dark, we remove shame from survivors, and we make prevention easier by educating ourselves. So really, just from the bottom of my heart and on behalf of Verity, I just thank you for providing a forum in an ongoing way and renewing your commitment. I also want to announce that Verity, the Sonoma County Rape Crisis Center, has received a million dollar grant to combat human trafficking, which is one of the most pervasive and challenging forms of sexual violence in our country and in the world at large, you know, of all of the forms. So we are going to, you know, keep committing our services and our support to survivors and our community, so thank you for being part of that, and thank you for all that each of you do.
Thank you. Does anyone have any comments?
I do have a couple of comments.
Yes.
I wanted to thank you for the work that you do. It's such an issue that really needs to be brought to the forefront more, and especially in light of some of the things that we've seen since last summer on a national political stage. I think some of these behaviors are learned behaviors, and if we can educate and support the education of how abhorrent these behaviors are, it will help us in the long run and help us to raise a community that's aware and respectful. So thank you.
I think Councilmember Moore said it perfectly. I would just add my congratulations and support for the work you do. I think what's really troubling all of us over the years who've seen, getting a truer and truer picture of what the numbers truly are in our society for what we're really dealing with is something quite different than we might have thought 10, 20, 30 years ago. And it just shows the depth of the problem, so the work's appreciated. Thank you very much.
Again, nothing to add from what's already been said, but I just wanted to thank you for the work you folks do. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
So yeah, I'll just echo what everybody said, you know, it's very difficult work. I think it's challenging because you're dealing with a real negative behavior on a lot of people's parts and trying to help people recover from that experience, so it's wonderful that you're able to provide the education and support that people need, and hopefully we can all do our best to turn things around.
Yeah, 43 years is a long time you guys have been in this community, so that's just really wonderful. And I'm glad you're there for people because I do know that a lot of people don't report what's going on, and I think that the work that you do helps them through that and gives them that support that they need to deal with that because it isn't a pleasant thing. So we do definitely appreciate the work that you do for all of those in our community. And with that, would you like a picture? Would you like that?
Yeah.
Okay, the, any changes to the agenda? I believe we have one change, correct?
Yes, given that I think most people are probably here for item 13B, I'd recommend moving 13B up in the agenda to after item nine, citizens' business.
Is that okay with everyone? Do you have any problem with that? Seems like the audience would be okay with that? Okay, so with that, we will move on to citizens' business. And any member of the public wishing to speak to the council on any items listed on the consent calendar or any matters not listed on the agenda that were within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council may do so at this time pursuant to the Brown Act. The council is not allowed to consider issues or take action on any item not listed on the agenda during this period. Pursuant to the City Council Policy 2016-1, comments of any member of the public are normally restricted to a total of three minutes in length per person for matters not on the agenda and a total of three minutes per person in length for any and all items on the consent calendar. Mayor may extend the time limit for a reasonable time where a disability accommodation has been requested. And with that, I do have a couple of speaker cards. Beth, and I don't... Oh, okay. You have a citizens' business comment, right? Okay, that's what I, okay. General, I thought, meant citizens' business, but just checking.
Good afternoon, good evening. I wanted to introduce myself a little bit with all been here, just for the Valparaiso piece, but there was another matter I wanted to bring up. We moved here specifically because this town is walkable. There's a missing piece of the sidewalk, and I've brought it up many times, and I'd like a final, to move it forward if we can. There's a missing sidewalk between Myrtle and the Veterans Building on Park. I've been told that it's not a priority because there's bike lane there that you can use. Explaining to a small child why they can be on the road this time but no other time is kind of tricky. Also, the bike lane is not painted and it's not enforced. There's always parking there. So if we're going to have an additional 40 families and we want them to walk to town to eat dinner, my daughter, we walk to preschool, we walk to Oliver's, what can we do about that? Thank you.
Thank you so much. So Karen Fees?
Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Karen Fees, and I'm the Director of Sonoma County Human Services Department, and I'm here today with just an informational item for you. I'd like to let you all know that Human Services will be opening our first non-Santa Rosa office in Petaluma at the end of this month on April 26. We understand and know that there's approximately 128,000 residents of Sonoma County that live within a 15-minute radius of Petaluma Office and that we're proposing to open a site on, and of those, approximately 33,000 have incomes less than 185% of the federal poverty level. We already know that 26,000 residents within that 15,000, 15-minute radius already receive services through our department, usually in the form of Medi-Cal or CalFresh. And I just wanted to make sure that you all were aware of that. I have some postcards to give to the clerk for you, and we are tentatively planning a grand opening event on May 31st at the office, which is going to be located on 5350 Old Redwood Highway in Petaluma on the Pengrove exit. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Can I ask you a quick little question? Is that, where is that by? 5350 doesn't quite do it for me. Is that kind of by the Petaluma Health Center?
It is. It's about a mile north of the Petaluma Health Center, one street to the east. So it's very close to Petaluma Health Center, about a mile away. And so it's on the corner of Old Redwood Highway and Redwood Boulevard, which is one step over from McDowell.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, that's all the cards I have. Anyone else wishing, yes, Lori?
Last Tuesday, you held a strategic planning meeting that was against the Brown Act. It was a webcast, it was held in the, in the, the Community Police Report. It didn't have speaking on every agenda item as required by law. That, it was, there was just multiple ones, and you guys all ignored the law, which you do every day, every meeting. I am here mostly though because of code of conduct, ethics violations. There was a new court case that allowed public officials' personal emails to be, to be public records if they had to do with the subject matter jurisdiction of the, of the city or the entity. I received an Information Act, one that has definite proof that Mark Lammon set up George Berich for peeping with the, with the Sonoma County DA using his personal email. He set up me for the whole Shirley Zane incident of basically calling me a liar. These are major ethics ones, and you've put yourself in grave danger of punitive damages for civil rights. I therefore ask for Mark Lammon's resignation from the council for his actions. Either that or one of the other councilmen or councilwomen need to, they need to start an ethics, an ethics complaint against Mark Lammon for his actions. He influenced the city council members, the central council business on March 14th by his actions of, he had, they were premandated as these information, this Information Act request showed. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. George?
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
For the benefit of those people in the audience and at home that don't know me, my name is George Berich. I'm a former city councilman here in Kattati. I'd like to speak to the last city council meeting a couple of weeks ago, where, where the council brought up this proclamation for the late Prue Draper. And they opened, you opened it up for public comment, and I commented about, "Why aren't we doing this more for other people in Kattati who are so deserving?" People who have contributed hundreds of hours and many years of service to the city, but you ignore them. And I'm concerned that as the city, council always seems to need to want to get the last word in. I commented on my experience with Prue Draper, and I sat down only to have the mayor afterwards say, "Well, you know, George, I don't, I disagree with you, that's not how I see it." Well, that's not the purpose of the council. We can't keep going back and forth like this and trying to get the last word, you know? Obviously, I got up to speak on this issue because the council has a different point of view. And I saw it and I heard it in the proclamation. So I got up and offered my side of the issue. It is bully tactics to berate people when they sit down to say that you're wrong and we are right. That's not good government. If anything, you know, I'd like to see a process whereby, you know, at the end of some of these issues that you bring up, you give each one of these citizens in the room a final 30 seconds to evaluate you and to tell you whether, you know, you did the right thing or not. Because I think the citizens need to have the last word. And Mayor, maybe you were not a victim of Prue Draper when you were campaigning for city council. You took probably Pat Gilarty's good advice, and you kissed up to Prue Draper, and you told her what you wanted to hear. She went campaigning with you door to door, and I think that's fine. You got what you wanted out of the relationship, and Prue Draper got what she wanted out of the relationship, and she got her museum, and she's got a lot of special favors from the council over the years. That's fine, that's politics, okay? And it kind of begged the question, you know, why would someone like Prue Draper even run for city council? Because you can buy a Kattati city councilman so cheaply. It's so cheap to buy each one of you. And Mr. Moore, some 10 years ago, you promised to run me out of town for having the audacity of criticizing your wife when she was sitting here as mayor, like she would have to be somewhat insulated from public criticism and debate. I don't know how that's going for you, but 10 years later, I'm still here, and I'm going to be here. I think what's really happening here is that you don't want critical thinkers, you don't want public participation. You're statists, you want to control, you want to control the dialogue, you want everybody to conform. I'm here to tell you, if you haven't noticed in 20 years, it's not going to happen.
Thank you for your comments. I have a card from Ben Garcia. Is it citizens' business that you'd like to speak on or item 13B? Okay, thank you. I just wanted to clarify, thank you. With that, is there anyone else that wants to speak on citizens' business? Items not on the agenda or anything on the consent calendar? Any comments on the consent calendar? Okay, seeing none, I will close that, and then we will move on to, well, first of all, Damian, can you comment on the sidewalks? Because I think there's a sidewalk plan.
Yeah, I believe the sidewalk that the speaker referenced between Myrtle and the existing sidewalk in front of the Vets Building along Park Avenue, that is in our pet and bike master plan, as I recall, and so it is a project that's in our list of projects. And we're always looking for opportunities to fill in that sidewalk. Because we do recognize that it is, and the Planning Commission, who's our advisory body on bike and pet issues, recognize that that was a gap in pedestrian connection.
So I know those items are prioritized, and maybe we could provide Beth with its priority and maybe look at it when we revisit the priorities of the sidewalk plan?
Yeah, I believe the, I'm not sure exactly what the process is going to be at this point, but I do know that SCTA is refreshing the plans this year, so that's coming up later this year.
Because I too walk in that area and have had to walk in the, in the bike lane there, and it is always hard, and it's much harder to push a stroller on the other side where it's just dirt, so I do tend to go in the street. do tend to go in the street. Then, I was wondering, Robin, if you couldn't comment on the strategic planning meeting? Because my understanding is our regular city council meetings are Tuesdays, the second and fourth Tuesdays of the month, and that is a regular meeting. Anything other than that, be it a closed session before, or when we have to move a day or time, that those are special meetings. And therefore, they have different requirements as far as noticing. Can you... That was my understanding.
Your understanding is correct, Mayor. That's exactly right. A departure in time or location from your regular meeting time and location is considered a special meeting. Special meeting can be noticed on 24 hours. And the other difference is, on the agenda, although public comment is permitted, it's limited to the items on the special meeting agenda. There is no general public comment at a special meeting.
There's not a citizens' business section?
Correct.
Is that... Okay. And I will say that the meeting was attended by about half a dozen folks, all of which spoke multiple times as we went through some different items. So, there was plenty of opportunity for folks to speak at that meeting. And anyways, more to come at our next meeting, which is next week, correct? The 18th? And there is no requirement that they're held in any special location, correct?
That's correct. It does not need to be in the regular council chambers. For example, you could have it in any other accessible location.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else have anything that they want to add? Yes?
I think you got most of it, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to add to the issues that were brought up from... And I didn't catch the last name. Beth, I didn't catch the last name?
Yeah.
The question of parking in the bike lane and enforcement on that, and potentially paint on it. If it's not legible, that might be part of our problem. And if you're going to look into this and report back, if you could report back on those two things as well, because obviously, street work sometimes takes longer to get done. The money cycle takes a bit, but some of the easy things, relatively easier, like paint, and then following that with stronger parking enforcement, that might happen quicker. So, that would be a good idea to put together, I think. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
Consent calendar?
Sorry, I forgot.
That's okay.
I have problems with number... Both of them, B and C, on developmental impact fees. There's hardly anything here. It doesn't say that you're floating over almost a million dollars, or I think it's a little over a million dollars, in development fees for Village Walk. When you've given every other preference to Village Walk, they had building within two months. The escrow wasn't even finished, and you had a construction building deal together. That is... What are you going to do when there's no money left? Because you floated all this... It delays the fees up to two years for the impact fees. What are you going to do when you don't have money for the rest of the city's services? Because you still have city staff time and city... They're working on the development now, and it's not fair to Colvin Group that you give all these advantages to Synenergy Construction when Colvin does everything you want. You're going to end up in court with them, too. The other thing is the bicycle pedestrian pathway signage. Nobody's listening to me on this either. There is not a single sign on the west side of the freeway, even though we have a whole mile of pedestrian pathway on that side. All of the grant is west of the pedestrian tunnel here on West School. We're neglected over that side. I don't know if you noticed. We can't even get one sign on that. And as far... That meeting was illegal. You need to go back and read your Brown Act. It... You're... It's a forum...
Excuse me, Lori, but that is for the consent items. That is not...
I can speak what I like to...
This is not citizens' business. I opened it up for you to speak on the consent calendar.
You're talking on my time. Thank you.
This is on the consent items, please.
You are talking on my time. You are interrupting my time. Thank you.
You are... Do you have anything more to say on these consent items?
I'm leaving because I am not being given my rest of my time because you are interrupting me. Thank you.
Thank you. On the developmental impact fees, that is a new policy, and Village Walk just happens to be the first going through that process. There is nothing to say that any and all other developers will not utilize that process. Village Walk is just the first to utilize that process. That's my understanding. We developed that process.
It's available for other developers, including the Colvin Group.
Okay.
And also, I will... There was a statement made about it being for city staff time, and that's not what impact fees are for. Impact fees don't defray staff time. They're for offsetting physical impacts of developments, so construction, future construction projects.
And my understanding is the payments are made as the buildings are built before they get final approval of the units. So, you cannot not pay them, or you don't get your final inspections for those units, correct?
That's correct. The agreements are set up, and the ordinance is set up so that the fees are paid before the impact is incurred, is incurred, excuse me. So, theoretically, there is no impact until that household moves in and starts impacting roads and sewer and water, and so the fees are not deferred past that point. And they must be paid prior to the property changing hands, so they're paid out of escrow.
Okay. Thank you. And then, as far as the wayfinding signs, the list that was in there was just a suggested list by staff, was my understanding, and it said that as we get farther along, the list will be finalized. Is that correct? And I do agree that we probably should have signage over on the west side.
You're accurate in what you say, and I think the packet was probably a little confusing because we included both the Planning Commission packet and the map that we developed post-planning commission. So, there are two maps in there. Page is 31 and... Bear with me one second. Yes, 25 and 31. And so, it's just the way the packets are put together. It's a little confusing that packet page 31 is the map that came after the Planning Commission discussion, and the commissioners themselves made several suggestions for locations on the west side. So, page 31 is the updated map. It still is just a suggested map. It's a starting point for us.
That was my understanding. I just wanted to clarify that. Yes, Vice Mayor?
Yeah. Just a quick comment on that. I wish Ms. Alderman had stayed, because I think she'd find this actually good news. Because I agree, I live in that neighborhood, you're always looking to make sure we derive some value over on that side, too, even though there's not as many of us. But I'm looking at this. There's potential wayfinding sign locations. I see 22 listed. Obviously, that's open to some change. We'll see. But five of them actually are on the west side of the freeway. That's roughly a quarter. Frankly, I'm going to be quiet about it, because I think we're doing pretty good on the west side here, so that's not bad. So, I just wanted to point that out, because I'm glad that, once it got through Planning Commission, there was the thought to making sure that everybody in the community was represented more equitably, and I appreciate that.
Thank you. Okay. So, with that, can we move on to Item 13B? And for the benefit of the audience, hopefully, I get this correct. We're going to take it subject by subject to allow people to speak on the different sections, because I know that people are maybe... Since we were here until 11 o'clock last time, and I know people have lives, that way, if, you know, some of the ongoing subjects related to the project you're not interested in, then you can feel free to leave. We won't get our feelings hurt. So, with that...
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and good evening, council. Before we get started, I would like to make sure everyone is aware that there is a traffic analysis memo at the back of the room. I think everyone's probably seen it, but just in case. That was available online yesterday, so it was added late, so we made 25 or so copies that are in the back. So, Lori McNabb, whom you've met several times now, will start out, and then when we get to the traffic issues, we'll bring Craig Scott up. And also available tonight is Daleen Whitlock, who authored the technical memo that you had on traffic. So, with that, we'll just get started. I think it's... I think it's important, we maybe didn't articulate this as clearly as we could have last time, that there is today an approved project on the Valparaiso property, and that project could be built with no further discretionary actions by the city. It was approved in 2009. All it requires is permitting at this point. The applicant asked to amend that map, and that's why we're here in this process today. But the fact is, the prior subdivision could be built if the applicant chose to. There are several things about this new project that lessen impacts of various kinds on... Especially the neighboring community, but on all kinds of our infrastructure. Just a quick recap of the differences. The 2009 approval had 62 homes. Today's proposal has 46. If you're looking at the traffic differences, the differences in traffic numbers between the two subdivisions, the 62 homes would produce an estimated 590 average daily traffic trips versus the 438 that today's proposal would include. In the adopted approved project, both Dorfman and Honor are connected streets. They connect through the subdivision. The prior approval, the perimeter setbacks facing Lasker Knolls or Hunter's Ridge and the Lund Hill Lane properties were 20 feet. Today, they're 30 feet, so they've increased by 10 feet. And the former project had less grading, less removal of soil, so the homes generally were at higher elevations. And this, again, we showed this two weeks ago when we were here. This, again, for everyone's information, is the approved project. So, you can see Dorfman and Honor, as I said, both go through. There were several internal alleys. The main connections to Valparaiso and to Feller remain pretty much the same in today's We didn't really provide a framework last time for why we encourage and, in cases, require streets to be connected. And we do that for some of the reasons that we mentioned that night. We do them because they produce better neighborhoods for a variety of reasons, having to do with safety, emergency response, evacuation, creates more opportunities for personal choice of drivers and residents. They're more efficient for all users of the roadway to have numerous connection points, and because it spreads the impacts and the opportunities around to all the various neighborhoods. And we also do them... The second reason we do them is because we're operating in accordance with previously approved policy and guidance documents, previously approved and adopted by the city. So, we don't just apply what we feel is right at the time. We're working under a framework of regulations that the council and the public have already reviewed and decided were appropriate for us. And so, I just want to highlight a couple of those. Out of our general plan, circulation element, this first policy, 1.2, ensure that the city's circulation network is a well-connected system of streets, roads, highways, sidewalks, and bike pedestrian paths that effectively accommodate vehicular and non-vehicular traffic in a manner that considers the context of surrounding land users, land uses and the needs of all roadway users. The second one, policy 1.14, design new residential streets as a grid system to the extent practical. We have curvilinear streets, but in the proposed subdivision, but at the heart of it, we're creating a grid with multiple opportunities for access. And third, require new development to include effective linkages to the surrounding circulation system for all modes of travel, to the extent feasible. And we reviewed all of these policies at the time the subdivision came in and decided that, indeed, especially because the roads were stubbed out in the neighborhood to the south, that it was indeed feasible to continue to connect them. The other set of guidelines that we use, the other set of regulations that we use are from our land use code, and in particular, these are from our subdivision design section, Section 17.7830. And these are regulations that all subdivisions are required to meet unless they are given a variance. So, this first subsection, 1, interconnected streets. Streets proposed within a new subdivision shall be interconnected and shall connect with adjacent streets external to the subdivision to provide multiple routes for pedestrian and vehicle trips from, to, and within the subdivision, as determined by the review authority to be appropriate. Second one, street extensions. Where a proposed subdivision adjoins unsubdivided land, streets in the subdivision shall be extended to the adjacent unsubdivided land as prescribed by the review authority to provide access to the unsubdivided land in the event of its future subdivision. And we're currently doing this with a proposed project just south of the Hunter's Ridge neighborhood on a property that's just inside the city boundary. They, too, are being asked to stub out streets to the south to the future property, future development, to accommodate future development on that property. So, it's something that we regularly evaluate, and we regularly impose when subdivisions come forward. And third, subdivision design shall not include dead-end streets except where through streets cannot be provided because of existing development or an environmental feature requiring protection and/or preservation. So, in the case of the proposed subdivision that I just mentioned, there is no opportunity to provide a connection on the north side of that project to Hunter's Ridge, because Hunter's Ridge is developed out on that boundary. So, that subdivision will have two points of access to Old Redwood Highway and to, in the future, to the property to the south. So, all this to say is that what we're consistently looking for is that neighborhoods have multiple points of ingress and egress and not just a single point of entry. Oops. Excuse me. And one of the biggest reasons that we do this, that I wanted to use this neighborhood to illustrate, because I think it is a good illustration of why we would want to do this, is for evacuation routes. So, emergency access, as I mentioned, is not just about... So emergency access is, as I mentioned, is not just about responders getting to homes or people or property. It's also about getting folks out in case of an emergency. And for the Hunter's Ridge development, if something were to happen that blocked Old Redwood Highway in the vicinity of Clothier and Lasker Lane, those folks would be trapped in that subdivision and not able to get out via vehicle. They could certainly get out on foot, but they would not be able to get out on Old Redwood Highway. And so they're essentially landlocked in their neighborhoods. The proposed street system gives them this access pathway through the 100 Valparaiso property and out to Lund Hill Lane to Valparaiso and then to West Sierra. They can also go out that same route in the beginning to Lund Hill Lane and then turn and get down to Cypress and then to West Sierra. Or third, get out to Cypress and go south to Railroad Avenue and then to Pen Grove or 101, whatever their destination was. But this is why we, this is the primary reason why we do it. The other stuff about good design is important, and we try and get always the best design that we can to build our neighborhoods to a higher and higher and higher quality. But at the heart of it, it's about keeping people safe. And we believe always that the best way to do that is to provide multiple points of ingress and egress. With that, Lori and I are going to step aside and, and let Craig Scott, our city engineer, address traffic conditions. Craig, did you want to meet?
I think that's the only slide, so, that I get. Mayor, members of the council, honorary mayor, oop, she left. Okay, Craig Scott, Public Works Director, City Engineer. The way we'd like to structure this segment on traffic is to first look at the existing conditions, because that'll be helpful, we believe, in a frame of reference for the later discussion. And then have, have the public come up and, and open that dialogue, and then we'd come back. We have Daleen Whitlock, as Ms. Parker mentioned, the author of the technical memo on the analysis, the traffic analysis, to listen to the public input and then provide, and we can hear what she has to say about the recommendations. So the figure up here is the, showing the existing conditions. You've got Old Redwood Highway, Valparaiso, and the two access points to the Hunter's Ridge development. The white spaces is just to represent the vacant 10 acres for the, the project. As, so, so the existing control there would be the two traffic humps, one at Clothier and one at Lasker. And at Clothier and Dorfman, there was a always stop there. Every approach to that intersection has a stop sign. Moving down Lasker and Dorfman, that's an always stop. And then moving along to Honor Place, where Honor comes into Dorfman, those are stopped, but Dorfman goes through. And then, as Ms. Parker had mentioned, the, the stub outs are there as, as master plan, you know, to, to be consistent with city policy to ultimately punch through. The, the traffic signal there, which would likely come up in, in this discussion, at the intersection of Old Redwood Highway and Valparaiso, that has permitted, or protected left turn lanes for the throughways and the cross streets. And so if someone were to arrive, arrive at that intersection and trigger the loop, and there's not a lot of traffic, 3.8 seconds is what, what that person would have to wait to make that left turn. Now, in congested, or, you know, during rush hour, when there's potentially a lot of traffic coming south on Old Red, and this person, worst case, got there and just missed the green light, they would have to wait approximately 66 seconds. So that's the range. And we have some information from the traffic studies, surveys that the city does, just to set, well, as required by law. And then it allows us to set the posted speed signs on our streets. And the recent one was in 2015, and that showed actual traffic counts on Old Redwood Highway from, I think it's McGinnis, all the way to the city boundary going south, at 18,700 trip, average trips per day, or vehicle, vehicle, per day, vehicles per day, period. And then on Valparaiso, it's much, much less, it's 1,900 vehicles per day on there. And so that's what's at and justified the speed limits that are there on Old Red at 35 miles per hour and on Valparaiso at 25 miles per hour. What's, there's a lot more data in there, and what it shows is that on Old Redwood Highway, the, the speed, there was, there was a few people in that hour that went 48, 49 miles per hour down that stretch. And then on Valparaiso, the top speeds there, two or three cars, are about 37 miles per hour. So there's a, pretty much a 10 mile per hour difference. People are going quite a bit faster on Old Redwood Highway. And where that comes into play is with the two access points for Hunter's Ridge at this time, coming out and making a left on Old Red versus a potential future access point on Valparaiso. You know, it's, it's interest, one, one is conceivably preferable to the other, you know, in terms of being less daunting. Let's see. Okay, I think at this point, that sort of sets the stage, what the existing conditions are. As I, as I mentioned, we've, well, I would like to say that since the, the public hearing on the 28th, staff and the applicant have worked really hard to address the, the public input that we received at that public hearing, and work to, to really better explain the situation and look for traffic calming and devices that, that would, would help allay those, those concerns. So with that, I'll return it to Ms. Parker.
And Madam Mayor, if, if this works for the council, we were thinking we would stop at this point and let the speakers raise the concerns that they have, and let the traffic official and, and Mr. Scott hear those, and then we can come back and address them as best we can.
Okay. Can we, the council, ask questions first? Would that be okay?
Sure.
Would that be okay? Does anyone have any questions? I know I do, but. No? Okay. So I guess I would like to ask Vicki, you talked about 17.7830 and the, the stubs that are there and asking for a variance. The way I understood what you said, it seems to me that when Hunter's Ridge was being developed, that at that point, if it wasn't their intention for those streets to go through, then they would have had to have applied for a variance against that code?
I can't speak with any authority, unfortunately, about the codes that were in effect at the time the subdivisions were done. It was obviously purposeful to stub out the streets, so I'm not sure that the requirement was codified as it is today, but it was obviously thought to be the best design going forward. So.
So we don't know if that section of the code is an update that happened before or after that subdivision?
Correct.
So, but it's possible that, that it might have been there, and if it was, that would have had to have been the process?
Yes, it would, it would have had to have either been an exception to the design standard or a variance.
Okay, all right, thank you. And then, my recollection, Mr. Scott, on the traffic survey, was we ended up splitting the speed limit on Valparaiso, because there's conditions at this end that we thought needed a slower speed, and at that other end by Old Red Hood, Redwood, it had a faster speed. Isn't that one of the streets we split the speed limit on? Am I, did I, like, just imagine that? It could happen.
Well, well, the segment extends from Lund Hill Lane
Okay.
to West Sierra Avenue, and that's posted at 25.
25.
A, the, and so that's what this, this speed survey speaks to. And then from Lund Hill to Old Redwood Highway, I would have to look and see if that segment was evaluated as well.
I think it was. I think that's, because I, my recollection, and I could be wrong, you guys can correct me, was that that street came back at something like 35, and we kind of go, oh my God, we, really, do we want people going around that corner at 35? And that's when they reevaluated that street and made a split. That's my recollection. So anyways. And then that traffic signal seems to be a little bit unique to most of the signals within the city, and that one seems to always be on motion sense. Some of the other ones, it seems like they're timed, that only certain times of the day are they motion sensed. But that particular one seems to always be motion sensed. Is that correct?
Yes, it has the, the traffic loops that it will respond to, and there are minimum wait times if that traffic loop is, is triggered. If that traffic loop is not triggered, it allows the, the through, throughway to stay green longer. So it's very sensitive to, to loops on all of the
Okay.
the throughway and the cross streets.
That was my, that was my feeling, at least, because I go through that one a lot, was that that one seems to be a little bit more sensitive than, say, the other lights in town. And then you mentioned possibilities of calming, but you didn't exactly say what those were. Did you want to share what those are? I think I know what they are, but.
I think I'm going to go ahead and let Daleen Whitlock
Okay.
speak to those.
Okay.
And
We can wait, I just.
ones that, that I covered were, were the stop signs and the speed humps.
That were existing.
That are already there.
Okay.
And so those are definitely part of the toolbox for
Okay.
perhaps adding more of those. And we'd see what, what, what other things that Daleen will come up with.
Thank you. Right, so with that, I have cards from some folks, but because we're going to do it in, in pieces, you'll have to let me know if this is the part you want to speak on. Certainly, if you want to speak on all of them, I will ask you again, but if you, if this isn't the particular subject you want to speak on, so let's say the part you want to speak on is not traffic, but privacy, you know, you can tell me, you know, wait, and we'll, we'll, we'll circle back. I just kind of wanted to let you guys know. So Kerry O'Reilly? Kenny, oh, sorry. I couldn't.
Hello.
Thank you.
Kenny O'Reilly, trying to make all these meetings. I live at 8351 Dorfman Drive, so I'm right there at the punch out the gate. So I do want to address again the traffic, and I appreciate you pulling up other information as far as policies and that in the past. I want to make note that what you guys have proposed, I think that most of us in Hunter's Ridge is not, you know, saying that we don't want it. It's, it's a good design. We like it. It's vastly improved from what it was. We know it's going to be built, which is great. But the main thing that we want to have is we want to have, you know, what we currently have in the neighborhood. We don't want all these vehicles going through. Now, we can talk about as far as shortcuts and going through from Valparaiso and getting on to Old Redwood, but I'm not necessarily worried about outsiders coming in the neighborhood to get a shortcut. What I'm worried about is just the added, from all those, the 46 homes that's being built, you're going to have everyone, you know, say half, go through. Most people will take Old Redwood to go to Petaluma. A lot of people take their, their kids to sports in Petaluma, to charter schools, not necessarily just going to Cattati. So that could be a good cut through, instead of going through the Valparaiso intersection, to cut through and just get on Old Redwood Highway. They want to go south on 101. A lot of people take Old Redwood instead of going out Valparaiso, sorry, to, to get on the southbound exit, because what happens in, in the wintertime, around Halloween, you get the cornfield, backs up traffic on 101. People go Old Redwood. So the main thing is, we just want to have, you know, the neighborhood that we moved into not having all these cars. Now, if there's 46 homes, most people have two vehicles, they're going, you know, if you take half those vehicles, which is only 46, people leave probably three, four, five, six times throughout the day, depending on what they've got to do. And if half of them go through, that could be easily 300 cars just a day that's going right by my house, from zero to 300. So it's, it's a big jump for me and for my neighbors. You know, you can have emergency access. You can have a single lane road or double lane road, but just don't have it go through. Put a border, that's a pole, that goes right into the ground, so there's no access, no one can park into it. So if you have to have a situation where you need evacuation route, it's just a simple thing, is pull and pull out, throw it on the ground, and now you have vehicular access into the neighborhood. You can otherwise keep it a walkway so that we can still, you know, interact, but just not have the vehicles go through. So, and you can do that both on Dorfman and Honor. So, and then keep our neighborhoods separate from vehicles, but yet we're still connected. So, sorry, going over.
That's okay, thank you. Kenny?
Yes?
Is traffic the only thing you wanted to speak on, or should I hold your?
You know, the rest is, I'm fine.
Okay, I just wanted to ask. I'm trying to be efficient. Okay. Okay.
Not again enough, but.
Okay. Ben Garcia?
Thank you, my name's Ben Garcia. I live in Cattati. It was approximately 25 years or 26 years ago Hunter's Ridge was developed, and I don't see, at that time, they envisioned a subdivision like this coming into it. My concern is traffic. Best thing on earth is traffic. I have nothing to do with downplaying the development next door to us, but I want to point out, there's only two exits and ingress in Hunter's Ridge, and I believe after this will be four. Am I correct? Four? 65 dwellings in Hunter's Ridge versus 46, and you're going to have four exits. There's two. It works out just fine in Hunter's Ridge. My concern is the traffic. Going back 50 years ago, I lived in San Leandro, California. I saw something that just changed my whole life. A street there was basically built, and then somebody developed the property, and they put apartment buildings there. It was bad planning, a child lost his life. I saw it, I still remember it. I hear the, the mother screaming. At that time, 50 years ago in San Leandro, nothing was heard. It was just done, done, and that was it. I'm asking each one of you council members to reconsider this. I mean, I hate to see, I, I want to be wrong. I don't want to see anything happen to anybody, especially children. And what I've seen in just walking through Cattati, people do not, I repeat, do not obey stop signs. They do not abide, obey speed bumps, they go right through it. I saw a lady almost get clipped last week. Elderly lady that walks all the time. I walk all the time. I want to see Cattati more pedestrian friendly. You can't make, open up neighborhoods doing 35, 45 miles an hour. If it's 35, they're doing 45. I see people run stop signs all the time where I live. And it doesn't, they don't understand that. If we're going to have this development, can we have more speed bumps? Because we had to fight 20-something years ago to get the speed bumps put in at Hunter's Ridge on Clolier and Lasker. That was after the fact, after the development. We had to come in here and say, people are not obeying the law. They don't obey the law, and you know it. And I really hope I'm wrong, that something doesn't happen to an elderly couple, or a pedestrian, or a child. And that child 50 years ago is dead. Mother screaming. All he did was really just go out a few feet to get his ball, and he got clipped. By that time, I think the guy was reaching for a cigarette or something, just clipped him in the head, split his head right open. And it's terrible. It is terrible. And I just hope you all can reconsider that, please. And if we're going to have this development, and we're going to have that going through, speed bumps. You can put police officers there and everything, but people don't obey the law. They still own cell phones. I'd like to see Cattati be more pedestrian-friendly. If we're going to have, open up the neighborhoods, make it pedestrian-friendly. Those two exits. Hunter's, Dorfman, and Honor Place.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Garcia, did you want to speak on any other aspect, or was just traffic?
Traffic's my main concern on that.
All right, I'll ask again, but I'm just trying to keep track for people. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mary Ann Waters?
Madam Mayor, I'd have some clarification. She'd like to read a letter of her neighbors prior to speaking. Is she allowed to do that?
Okay, can I say that that letter is more related to the other issue of privacy than it is about traffic? So I'll wait on that. I have an email from my neighbor Greg Nordquist, who lives across the street, and he's in the Philippines.
Okay.
So, but that's not what we're talking about right now.
Okay.
Hi.
Hi.
I'm Mary Ann Waters. I'm at 8416 Honor Place, so I don't back to this property, but I definitely am here in support of my neighbors as well, and my neighborhood. And one of the things, in fact, when I was talking to Greg via email, was, for me, I think that we have, the streets going through will reduce our security, our value, okay? I agree, kids shouldn't be playing in the street. And yes, there's an older lady who walks her dogs in the street, okay? She probably can't get past the sidewalk, because it's blocked with something, okay? But that is the kind of neighborhood we've gotten used to living in. And they will change. It will change. We know it will change, okay? But my concern is Dorfman is such a straight-through. And while it was designed as, it's a stubout, you call it. It's got a gate going across it now, okay? Didn't when I moved in. And it curves a little bit uphill. Who would have guessed that you'd ever be able to take that road and shoot right down to Valparaiso? Because that's what this design is doing. It doesn't just have a stubout that was intended to go through to another housing development. It has a stubout now that is going down to Jagel and shoot right out to Valparaiso. And I mentioned this before. The traffic consultant is absolutely correct. It's hard to get out onto Old Redwood Highway when people are going 48, 49 miles an hour. I'll go through this new neighborhood, okay? Is that right? What about the people who aren't here to speak? These are the people who are going to buy these homes in this new neighborhood. They probably don't think that's such a great idea either, okay? We don't want all their traffic taking their kids to Pen Grove School, and they're not going to want us going through to Valparaiso. It was also said in the last meeting that the people coming from Pen Grove were not going to be the ones to cut through. I disagree. I don't know where that came from, and I don't think it was based factually. I do believe that if they don't want to spend those 66 seconds max at that light, turning left on to Valparaiso, that they will, if we make it easy. And so what I'm asking for is if there is traffic that goes through, that it is circuitous. It is a route that no one would want to take. I don't want more speed bumps in my neighborhood. I've lived in neighborhoods in Rona Park where speed bumps ruined the struts on both of my cars, okay? I had to replace the struts on them twice on one car. I lived there 10 years, okay? So, you know, it's, they're not good for your vehicles, is bottom line. And who wants to keep doing that, you know, going over those speed bumps? I kind of liked your idea about the one-way street, going one way and the other way in, Mr. DeLorso. It's one of those ideas that's thinking outside of the box that you had brought up. I do think we need to think outside the box. I do think neck-downs are possibilities. I think there needs to be something that prevents people from just making that their first option. My other concern is about thieves, okay? We've been pretty safe in our little corners. And even when the parties occur at 65 Lasker Lane, we have been lucky enough that the police department can come in and stop people right there. They can just put their fire trucks right across those two exits, and nobody's leaving, okay? We kind of like that, all right? The people who have been struck by thieves, burglars, people ripping off the wheels of their cars, are the people in the first block of Lasker or Clolier, okay? Because why? Because it's a quick getaway. And so what we're doing is opening up a neighborhood, yes, to a quick getaway to Valparaiso and 101 South. And I am 100% against that. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Tom Stewart?
My name is Tom Stewart. I live across the street from Mary Ann, and she put it so well. The, I think we're all consigned to the fact that there's going to be a subdivision to the north of us, and we'll get over that. But if you're going to run the streets together, you know it, and I know it, no amount of stop signs or speed bumps is going to really have any effect on the amount of traffic that goes through there. And we do have a quiet, nice, comfortable neighborhood, although we may not have as many evacuation routes as we didn't know we needed. But the, there's no need. I mean, you're acknowledging that there will be significant traffic into our neighborhood if you're going to put speed bumps and stop signs to try and quell 450-some different car automobile trips that may, some of which may come through there. So, like Mary Ann said, we have a great neighborhood. We want to keep it that way. We'll, we'll take the new subdivision, but just don't have it, you know, infringe on our subdivision, which has been there for some time and is really pretty nice. Thank you.
Thank you. Beth?
Hi, again. So I'm at 8350 Dorfman, so right up against the new subdivision. Couple points. So the stubs were put in, in, what, 1989? And I believe the ideas for town planning have moved on since we're now really in favor of porches and community. So, yeah, that doesn't really fly as a reason for me. My personal experience for cut-throughs, I cut through to Oliver's if I drive. I go up Park and off to Benson. It's less, it seems quicker. It's not, probably. There's the same number of traffic stops. There's a narrow road. There's more turning. There's more waiting. But I still do it, every single time. Thank you for doing the traffic survey. That makes us feel much more heard. To point on that, it seemed that there were a lot of things excluded in the timing that was done, so I don't know that it really accounts for rush hour, which is going to be the main problem. Everyone coming home at 5:00. That's when the kids are out. That's, that's just, yeah. The theory of grid planning, one street is not a grid. And then I had a question about whether there will be a turning lane on Jagel, because that's really close to the intersection. And I've walked that road numerous times with a stroller, and I've always paused before the road across, because you can't really see coming around. And I've always been concerned that someone will come around at speed. If I'm going to turn off Old Redwood and turn onto Valparaiso, and then make a hard left, I'm going to be a little bit worried about being rear-ended. And that, I think, is everything on the traffic.
Thank you. Eric?
I was somewhat fascinated with Ms. Parker's discussion about egress and emergency evacuation, that sort of thing. Because three of you live on streets where there's only one way out. Mr. Lammon, you drive out of your house. There's one road down the road. Ms. Gilman, one road out to the main road. Conceivably, she could run through the field, but otherwise, there's one way to drive out. Mayor, you likewise have one way out. We have a few places like Windmill Farms. 100 houses, two roads. One road out that's paved, and one dirt road that conceivably, people can go out in an emergency, but they couldn't drive to it because they don't have access to it. So that would be a place for them to walk across the street. Over 100 condominiums neatly tucked behind the new soon-to-open bathroom and the tennis courts. There's one road that goes out to East Cattati. Centera Way, one road. So almost all the developments in the city have one road. It's kind of strange that suddenly now we're expanding and opening up. It's just kind of curious, because even where I am on Marshway, it would make perfect sense for the road to go through to McGinnis Circle, but it's a dead end. And yes, I can escape on a bicycle, but I can't drive down that road. So a lot of things don't seem to add up. Thank you.
Thank you. George?
I am not in favor of connecting these two neighborhoods to vehicular traffic on Honor and Dorfman. I agree with Kenny that if you can provide a pedestrian accessway and put some traffic bullards in the ground, that might be thinking outside the box and might be a solution. But my main concern is that your policy about connecting these neighborhoods is not consistent. Eric took all the thunder on that issue, but he forgot one that's dear to me, and that's Arthur Street and East Cattati Avenue. There's a place where would have been a perfect opportunity for the city to create connectivity where there hasn't been one in decades, to let, to alleviate some stress off Old Red and allow people to take a right turn on Arthur and get out to Old Red and the freeway. Years ago, as the story is told, I understand some of the citizens objected to having that street open to through traffic and blocked it. Their concerns here before the city council years ago were, fell on deaf ears, and they decided to take matters into their hands, their own hands, and they started dropping material there and blocked the streets themselves. Until finally, I understand that the city gave up and decided to make, put a permanent island in there, again, making it only one way in and one way out for the people on Arthur Street. You just don't seem to be consistent. We've spent hundreds of thousands of dollars on consultants to come to Cattati and teach us this theory of utopian community with all this connectivity, yet you don't really want to practice it, especially on streets where you have political supporters who do a lot of campaigning for you and support your campaigns financially. We have people on Arthur that fit that mold. My other concern, Mayor, is about traffic, is the fact that where is the police chief on this issue of kids playing in the street? I see the police chief more of a politician than a police chief, because we need some legal advice here that the fact is playing in the streets is illegal. It's an illegal activity. And in fact, if kids are playing in the streets, and a car comes down the streets and gets into an accident, or veers off and hits something or somebody, it's the parents who are liable for that accident. And the fact that the city sits here and condones or gives a silent treatment to the fact that kids are playing in the streets here, the city could be held liable for any damages or injuries to those children out in the streets, unless you take a firm stance that it is against the law for children to play in the city streets. You need to have the political will and the political guts to explain the code about playing in the streets and the dangers, because people do get hurt. People have gotten injured. I saw it when I was a kid, too. People got maimed and broken legs and everything by cars from kids playing in the streets. Now, you have the ability to change the law if you want to. You can change the law and say, yeah, we're going to allow kids to play in the streets, but you better be ready for the legal ramifications, because you're now put on notice. This issue has come before you in living color, and you need to take a stand on this whole issue of children playing in the streets. Deadly business. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Lori, yes?
The developers bought this land in 2002, and in 2003, the Tiger Salamander was made endangered. And their property became pretty much worthless. And 2005, there was a court case that showed that there was a, that Lund Hill Drive was in the breeding ground of the Tiger Salamander, and was determined to be that, be that. It would be assumed that 100 Valparaiso also would be under that same, same one. And same determination, that it was in the, it's 1.8 miles within a breeding ground. And they're special, it doesn't limit building. It just limits that there are special procedures, and you need to consult the feds. I've asked repeatedly and repeatedly for you to consult the feds. If there's nothing wrong, the feds would put a declaration that that was fine. But no, you don't do that, because you know things are not kosher here. This development shouldn't be happening. The only time in the last two years we've had full council meetings, chambers, is about this neighborhoods and building them up with housing developments or streets. The general plan update two years ago, there was the whole thing about Gilman Ranch Road to Richardson Avenue. The whole west side of Cattati came out and protested, saying we wanted our streets, we wanted to protect our set of life. Now you have the Hunter's Ridge in one, in the hun- it's, this development does not have to be done. It shouldn't be done, unless, especially if you don't consult the feds. How many millions of times do I have to say, consult the feds? Because you had, already had a lawsuit on it in 2005. I forget what it was, but it was City of Cattati versus somebody, that showed the federal determination that it was Lund Hill was in the 1.8 miles. The reason why it's 1.8 miles is that's how the Tiger Salamander has to go elsewhere to breed, and they go up to 1.8 miles away. And so that's, that's also why the feds built the Love Tunnel on our Stunney Point, because they have to, anyways. So this is what, you need to have the whole picture done here. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak on the traffic aspect? I will allow that. Come on, can you come up so it gets recorded, please?
Mary Ann Waters, thank you for that moment. It was on the slide that had the evacuation routes, and it showed them going out Lund Hill and another, but it wasn't Valparaiso. I just was wondering why you didn't have an evacuation route out Valparaiso when that's- I just was wondering why you didn't have an evacuation route out Valparaiso when that's the current plan on the.
But folks could easily go through the proposed subdivision and get right to Valparaiso. I didn't show that one because it was kind of a no-brainer, I guess, in my mind that that one was, we've already talked about because of the traffic conversations that we've had. The other reason is that if Old Redwood Highway is out of commission down by your development entrance streets, it's quite likely that that signal is out of commission as well.
So that entrance to Valparaiso was kind of unnecessary?
That entrance, the.
It's like you had the evacuation routes without even using that one. I just wanted to clarify.
Yes.
Anyone else? Yes.
Hi, my name is Mary Smith and I spoke last week about our general disapproval for these roads being open. And what I've gathered, there may be some things I don't know, but this is the last step to be in code, to avoid having a super block, a mega block or whatever, the larger blocks. And it would be, this study, I'm sure it was very expensive and I appreciate it. It was quite long. But I still think that, you know, something else could be done. I'm sure it would be very expensive to dig up Old Redwood Highway and put another lane there, which would be an alternative. But we have an enclosed neighborhood. We feel like we're being invaded and our privacy is being invaded by having these roads That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes.
My name's Antonia Ramirez. I live in Honor Place. I missed the last meeting, but I gather from what I hear, the project's gonna happen eventually. I'm probably 100% sure about that. But I'm kind of in favor of what Kenny proposed, you know, set bollards because I've been in other cities like in Berkeley. I don't know if you guys have been around there. There's street like that, they have bollards, so, you know, the fire truck can remove them or police officer or whatever. So it's a pretty good idea that you guys need to consider in case because I've been in this house for almost 20 years and I really enjoy my neighborhood and it would be kind of hard just to have these 46 new homes with no parking. They gotta be moving into our neighborhood, park their cars and, you know, probably crime will, most likely will happen because, you know, we kind of know our neighborhood and it's pretty safe. So it's something you guys gotta consider, you know, that it will increase crime and if you guys can think about it, you know, think about it out of the box and say, oh, yeah, we got access, bicycle access to the neighborhood, that would be okay with me. But I definitely, you know, if you guys can consider the bollards, I think that's a pretty good idea from Kenny. So that's pretty much it. And actually, also, I was listening to the guy there, somebody was saying something about, you know, going access for like through Valparaiso. I mean, we only got two accesses, access to Old Redwood, but we never had an incident that, you know, the fire truck can get into our neighborhood, you know, so it's something that, you know, it never happened and I don't think it will happen because it just seemed like we got two accesses to the freeway, to the Old Redwood Highway and having another two roads, I don't think will beneficial to our neighborhood, I don't think. That's it.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, so, bring it back. Are you guys prepared?
I think at this time, we'd like to ask Ms. Whitlock to come up. She's had an opportunity now to hear the public's specific concerns and again, she's the one who prepared the analysis that we have. So, Daylene, do you want us to put up the slide? Does that help?
Sure, in a sec. My name is Daylene Whitlock. I'm with W Trans in Santa Rosa and I have been a traffic engineer for about more years than I probably want to admit, but about 30 years. And I, right from, to kind of start this conversation, I certainly feel a sense of empathy for these residents. I live in a neighborhood, we had a stubbed-out street at the end of the block, I'm the second house from the corner, so when they got ready to build the subdivision next to us, I wasn't thrilled with the idea. They backed right up behind my house and so I had to put up with all the construction. So I understand why there is a concern. To be honest, after all these years, I don't notice that there's any difference in the traffic as a result of having put that street through and it went on through to not just 46 homes, but hundreds of homes. But they have other access points as well. It's a grid neighborhood, so I didn't really notice that much of a change. When I first was asked to take a look at this, I thought, well, why in the world would anyone drive through that neighborhood when they've got a straight shot to a traffic signal? And going through the neighborhood, they've got speed humps and stop signs and a lot of reasons why it wouldn't make any sense to me because it would take a lot longer. So I actually spent some time this weekend measuring time that it took people to get from one stop sign and through the next and looking at how fast they travel. I was actually surprised that it was quite a bit faster than I would have expected. I had originally thought that the average speed would be somewhere around 12 or 13 miles an hour by the time you averaged in the stop signs, but it was quite a bit higher, more like 15 to 18 miles an hour. So, you know, by the time you average in the time. So I, when I looked at that and I thought, well, okay, got a point. Maybe people would find it faster to come through the neighborhood. So at that point, we backed up and really, really looked at this thing again and said, what can we do to make sure that the neighborhood retains as much of its current quality as it can? And I'm a firm believer in connected streets, not because, not necessarily because of all the things that have been said before, but because it's friendly. It's a good way of getting to know people if you can walk up and down the street or they drive by and they stop in front of your house. It creates better neighborhoods where you've got connectivity. So I believe from a traffic perspective that it's the right thing to do. So we looked, but we looked at what do we do now to keep it from being a Speedway? Because these folks have gotten very accustomed to having relatively low volumes. Certainly, the gentleman who lives at the north end of Dorfman has like zero volumes in front of his house. So two new houses at the end of the street would dramatically increase the volume of traffic in front of his house. It doesn't matter how many of them there are. When there's none, any increase is a big number. So I can understand his perspective that it's a big change. But I think that for the most part, that the traffic is gonna be, it's gonna be a real mix. I think there are people who live in the existing Hunter's Ridge subdivision who will find it easier to go out through the new subdivision, out to Valparaiso, make their left turn on a street that only has 1,900 vehicles a day and a 25 mile an hour speed limit, as opposed to trying to make it on a street that carries 19,000 vehicles a day and a 35 mile an hour speed limit. I think they're gonna find that that's attractive and that they want to go through that route. And so it's probably gonna be kind of a cross. I think that you'll draw, have as much traffic from the existing Hunter's Ridge properties being drawn through the new subdivision, as you will from the new subdivision being drawn through Hunter's Ridge. But in response to the concerns that the residents brought up, we did look at, let's do some traffic calming out here. And I would first note that parked cars are a form of traffic calming, so the fact that there is parking along the new streets being created within the subdivision, that makes a narrower street. Speeding tends to occur where there's a big wide space and a long distance. And so the new streets are not gonna, they're not gonna really invite speeding because they will be, they will have parking along them. But in addition to that, what we looked at is putting always-stop controls at the new intersection of Dorfman and Jagla, which originally it had been proposed with just a single stop sign, but we're adding two more so that anybody coming in has to stop before they turn onto Dorfman. We're suggesting it always stops at Dorfman and Honor Way so that there's not that long stretch along Dorfman without any stop controls. We're suggesting a speed hump near Honor Way on the new subdivision street at Jagla. So all of those things are intended to keep bringing it down. When we looked, when we looked at travel times, or when I looked at travel times, I was looking at what happens during the morning commute, which is when the highest delay occurs for that left turn to go from Old Redwood Highway to Valparaiso. Now, mind you, there are only 25 cars making a trip that hour in the peak hour. There were only 25 left turns. So we're not talking about a huge volume of traffic. But those 25 vehicles, if they encountered that 55 seconds of delay, then it would be faster maybe to turn through the neighborhood. So I thought, okay, well, what if they're coming along and they're watching the light and they're thinking, okay, if it turns red for the left turn, I'm gonna go here instead. You can't see it. I checked. And I had, I was stopped on Old Redwood Highway at the left, next to the left turn pocket, not quite stopped, but slow. I was creeping along until I got to where I could see the left turn light ahead of me and at that point, I was even with Lasker Lane. So you'd either have to make the decision to do it in advance or you'd have to make some kind of a crazy left turn from the through lane, which I'm not saying that wouldn't happen, but it's not a real simple, let's divert this direction instead because I can see that there's a red light up there. People would have to make that decision in advance. And I think, given the speed humps, which even one of the residents says they don't like the speed humps, but they do slow people down. So between the speed humps, the stop signs and the fact that you have to make so many stops and so many turns, as opposed to just continuing straight along on, at 35 miles an hour to Old Redwood, on Old Redwood Highway to Valparaiso, yes, you're gonna have to wait for the left turn light, but it's, other than during, you know, one hour of the morning when it's over 50 seconds of delay, the rest of the day, it's 25, 30 seconds, sometimes only five seconds. I mean, it can be a very short delay. So there's really not the draw to go through the neighborhood most of the day. Very short time period in the morning when it might be, but given all of these other things, it's not, it's gonna be faster to just stay on Old Redwood Highway. Coming the other directions, that's even more true because you, from Valparaiso, making the right-hand turn onto Old Redwood Highway, there's hardly any delay at all. I mean, that's a really fast, easy movement. Whereas again, if you have to go through the neighborhood and make, and all the speed humps and the stop bar stops and everything else, it would be a much more circuitous route. Bottom line, I get it. I understand why the neighbors are concerned. I think that, I worked on traffic studies for a couple of projects in Catati and I sat here and I heard people very concerned about how traffic was going to, you know, be overwhelming and they were, their life was gonna change and nothing was ever gonna be the same anymore because of this new subdivision. And it's the one, it's the north end of the park, we're just south of the hub, on the east side of Old Redwood Highway. And there was a lot of concern about that and I think that's the one, somebody said they go through to get places. If you didn't have that connection, you wouldn't be able to make that diversion. But the people who were already here and came in about that, they were just adamantly opposed to that subdivision and I'd be willing to bet that the neighbors now can't imagine life without that subdivision. It's just a part of their fabric. And this will happen. I mean, I know, like I said, I understand, I get why they're concerned and it will be different. It will change things for them, but it will not be such a substantial change that they can't get used to it within a short amount of time. And certainly, I think that there are some advantages that they're not seeing in terms of being able to get out of the subdivision and go through the new subdivision and get to Valparaiso more easily, especially people on the north end, at the north end of Dorfman and Honor, instead of having to go out and turn onto Old Redwood Highway. If they want to go towards the freeway, they can go out and make their turn on Valparaiso. So there's, there are some benefits to the residents as well. And obviously, if the council so decides, you know, like I said, we've suggested some extra stop signs and a speed hump that weren't part of the original proposal. There are other opportunities. If you want to put more speed humps in, that could certainly be done. You could put one in between Jagel and Honor. You could put one in between Honor and Lasker. So, you know, you can do whatever you want. Like I said, we recommended the additional stop signs at Honor in lieu of having that longer two-block downhill straight segment without any kind of controls. But there are certainly other opportunities for additional things such as speed humps. And with that, I don't want to ramble too long, so I would be happy to answer any questions you have.
Can I ask, there was a.
You're the mayor. Yes, ma'am, you may ask.
A question was asked about whether or not there would be a turn lane into Jagel because that corner is right there. Will there be a turn lane in there or will you be hanging out in the, in the main street?
Turning left from Valparaiso?
From Valparaiso into.
I don't believe there's one in the plans at this point. I don't know whether there's enough room for one. I kind of doubt it.
There's not enough room. Okay.
And it probably wouldn't be warranted, just given, I've done literally hundreds and hundreds of warrant studies for left turn lanes and given that there's only 1,900 vehicles a day on Valparaiso, which is probably close to half and half, usually if you don't have more than about 300 or 400 vehicles an hour coming at you, you don't need a left turn lane. So I suspect that given the low volumes, for the most part, if somebody pulls up there and wants to turn left in, they might wait four to five seconds, but they aren't gonna be sitting, hanging out there for very long.
I suppose they could go up to Feller a little bit farther and come back around, I guess. All right. Any other questions? Okay.
No?
Now what?
You guys are easy.
For now.
Oh, for now, okay. Did you have a question?
Whenever we're ready to start.
Well, I don't know that, that every.
We've got different subsections.
I don't know that we're done. Are you done?
We're, for the most part, done, although if the mayor would indulge me for a minute, there were a couple of comments.
Certainly.
Made about evacuation and multiple points of egress that I think are worth addressing. Codes evolve over time. They have to because everything around them that they're regulating changes. And so, of course, our codes are the same. They've evolved since the 80s. It was actually, these stubbed-out streets were probably ahead of their time when those subdivisions were put in because, yes, town planning changes and yes, it's still desirable to have connected streets. The reason, many of the developments that were mentioned as not having multiple points of access were built in the 70s, built in the 80s, or our single-family homes served off of single private driveways, or two or three homes served off private roads. Today's fire code requires two points of access when there are more than 50 homes being served. So codes change, we apply them, we adopt them, we apply them and we change with them. But obviously, in any city, there are gonna be examples of subdivisions or buildings that were built before current land use codes, before current building codes, and those are adapted over time if possible, along with everything else that we update. So I just wanted to mention that, just because developments built in the 70s didn't have two points of access, that doesn't mean that we don't strive to increase the safety of our neighborhoods as we go forward. And as a matter of fact, with Centera Way, that is one of the limitations on that specific plan currently is based on not having multiple points of fire access. So I just wanted to clarify that because I think it was confusing for several people. And I'll let Mr. Craig tell us, Mr. Scott, excuse me, tell us if there's anything else he wanted to add.
Just one comment on the one-way streets. Just would like to know more of the justification for that. If it's to narrow the street, then that's gonna be difficult because we need the 22 because we need the 22-foot fire lanes, lane for fire trucks. And then, I just saw problems with that, with confusion. And where one-way streets would essentially become two-way streets, sort of inadvertently, and cause problems that way as well. If people are running stop signs, they're going to be going two ways on a one-way street. And it would penalize people in the neighborhood. And I just, I just think that would need a lot more thought before we'd go forward with that idea.
Well, because, wouldn't a whole section of Honor have to become one-way? I don't know which way, but it would impact all of the existing Honor. If you went one-way, you couldn't go one-way on just a little itty-bitty piece. You'd have to make the whole section be one-way, correct?
Yeah.
And then we'd have a-
There, the temptation to just kinda go the wrong way is gonna be too great.
And then, exactly. Then, wouldn't you also have a similar problem on the other section of Honor? Because then it wouldn't be clear whether, well, gee, is that section only one-way? And which way can I go? And then, how do I go? And same with Dorfman. I mean, isn't it difficult to have a section of a street be one-way? Am I crazy?
Yeah. And that's my, why my question is, you know, what's the motivation for that? If it's to narrow the street, then I don't think that that's going to pan out because we do have to keep the streets a certain width. And there are other ways, much more effective ones, to slow traffic with the humps and the stop signs. That's the only comment I had.
Okay. I do have one more kind of question on what was brought up. And that's the section on the environmental review on the Tiger Salamander. I believe that that was addressed in the existing EIR, correct?
Correct. The discussion of the feds?
Yes, that's-
The feds, that's the part.
And what, can you come up, Neil, so it's on the, on the thing? My recollection is that in the EIR, it talks about all the federal information in the existing EIR from whenever it was the EIR was done.
We even did a study when we originally bought the property. We got an original no-take letter. We've got, the feds have then delineated it when the world changed in 2014? Did I get that right?
2011.
2011. And we brought in consultants, redid it, brought the feds back in. Though, we've gotten the extra mile there.
Okay. Thank you. I just wanted to make sure that that was, that was covered. Let's see. Okay, thank you. Okay. Go ahead and ask while I'm kinda looking through to see if I-
I'd see the opportunity.
Thank you.
So, there were a couple of people that mentioned crime, that, you know, crime could increase with a new subdivision. I suppose crime could increase with any subdivision. I'm not quite sure really how to interpret that. I really, I think neighborhoods are such that everybody keeps an eye out for themselves. I know in our neighborhood, a lot of retired people, which I guess I'm gonna be there soon enough, so I'll be one of these soon. But a lot of retired people who were in there when we first moved in kept such an eagle eye on your house. It's like, you know, when you guys were gone for a half an hour, cars pulled up and parked on the sidewalk. It's like, whoa, great. Okay, thank you. So, and I think that's the concept of a neighborhood, is that people do kinda keep an eye out for themselves. So, I don't think, again, 'cause I heard it twice and it kinda bothered me that it's like, well, I don't think subdivisions mean more crime necessarily. But I think people, and maybe there's been issues there. I think there's been issues in probably every neighborhood, certainly even in my neighborhood over the years. But I think, you know, you do what you can through your neighbors to help deter that. But I just kinda wanted to bring that up because I had heard that from a couple of people and it just, just didn't seem like a real fit there. Thank you.
Did you have a question?
Not a question, but I'm ready to show my cards, Madam Mayor, if it's that time.
Oh, okay. Can I make one more comment before you?
Madam Mayor, are we gonna segment this by issue?
Yes, we are.
And make decisions by issues as a body?
Give direct-
As a government body?
Give direct, yes.
Okay. So, right now, we're just talking traffic?
Traffic. Traffic. Okay. One of the things that has been brought up consistently about the traffic is the playing in the streets and the safety of children and things. And I also have been over to the neighborhood multiple times to kinda see kind of what's, you know, what's taking place. And one of the things that I took note of, not only did I finally see some young men playing basketball on Dorfman, I took note that there was at least five other basketball hoops at various, various points in the neighborhood. So, one of the things that, from a traffic, safety kid, you know, that whole aspect, I would like to hear about possibilities for maybe providing those capabilities in, other than in the street. So, what are our options other than in the street? Be they in the community area and the new subdivision, or in another place close by so that we do not have to have those kids playing basketball in the street. That was my observation. With that, Vice Mayor, did you wanna?
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm very sorry. Councilman Landman, I forgot to mention one thing that I think is critical to the discussion when I brought up evacuation again, is that the Rancho Doby Fire District Fire Marshal in conversations with, he's been in training this week, so wasn't able to give us anything in writing, but says that he will be happy to tell us, give us his thoughts on the connection of the streets. But verbally told me that they have counted on the plan that they've been reviewing along with us to provide the connections that they feel are good improvements to the existing neighborhood as well as the proposed neighborhood. So, they would have to stop and relook at a subdivision that didn't, didn't include connections and just see how they feel about it from a fire safety perspective and response. Because Lasker Knowles slash Hunter's Ridge does have 68 homes, I think, is the count. And so, they have been assuming that the streets would be connected and therefore increasing emergency access. So, apologies that we don't have something in writing for you tonight, but I just wanna make you aware of that.
Thank you. Now, I think it's your turn.
Look around?
All right. Till someone else jumps in.
Yeah, exactly. Well, first of all, I think I'm gonna start by saying I won't be asking the police chief to arrest children for playing in the street. I'm not ready to go that far. I think that's a bold declaration, but I'm willing to make it. What I would like to say, though, seriously about this, is I appreciate all the letters, the comments we got last time and what we got tonight. And I especially appreciated hearing tonight, a few of you mentioned that you felt like you were listened to and you, in turn, appreciated that. I had the experience of being here probably 15 years ago, before anybody in this dais or on the staff table was here, sitting in the audience like you. And I didn't have that feeling then. I was treated politely, but I didn't have the feeling anybody listened to my concern. And in the long term, it turned out, I felt we as neighbors had valid concerns. So, that stayed with me. And one thing that particularly brought that out, I had a letter from Mr. Randall Corbett. I don't know if he's here tonight. I didn't hear the name. But he had a lot of good points. And one point that jumped out is, he said he felt that city leadership was not listening and didn't care. And the one thing I would respectfully disagree with in his letter would be, of course, that. Because if that was the case, we wouldn't have spent the hours we spent at the last meeting. We wouldn't have asked for this long delay that did make a lot of people very happy. And we wouldn't be spending this time on it. And I can tell you, I personally wouldn't have spent hours in the last couple of weeks putting a lot of thought into this because it's been difficult to parse and try and arrive at what's the right calculation with all these different interests. I get that connectivity is logical. It just makes sense. And I would expect nothing more than a proposal like that from engineering, from planning. And as a former fireman, that's, of course, what firemen are gonna say too. Because even if it's unlikely, there's always the potential that that extra connectivity will be helpful at some point. And I do agree that I don't think true traffic will be quite as bad as some of us fear. I think I said that last week and I still is. I really look at the data, I don't think it will be as bad as we think it is. But I will honestly say, it'll be worse than what you have now. And that's what led me to the, kind of the deciding point, is I have not heard any arguments that really moved me that the value of the connectivity weighed higher over the benefits, the existing, prior existing benefits that you enjoy in the neighborhood right now. As I really look at this, I mean, there are some general benefits to connectivity. But the slowness of the streets, the private aspect of it, that strikes me as something that I would, as a resident, would value higher, even if I honestly admitted the value of having this connectivity and potential for an occasionally seconds better emergency access. So, with that, I tend to support not having. After thinking about this for several weeks, I've come around to this perspective. I don't think through traffic through here personally might be the best path. And I say that not because of just neighborhood activism, although you've opened my eyes to a few things, because if this blocked any regional thoroughfare or important traffic system in town, like some of the older areas that have been mentioned, it was done long before any of our times and did, in fact, block some important access, I wouldn't support it. And I'm not embarrassed to vote differently than a room full of people if I truly feel it's a better direction. I think a lot of you came here and told me you didn't want roundabouts. I went ahead and voted the other way. Still thought that was a good choice. I don't think I got a lot of people to agree with me, though. But for this, I have to end with what Mr. Corbett's letter, the one thing that really got me. He said, very simply, and it's been restated a couple of times tonight. He said, Hunter's Ridge has been very successful, very happy, very healthy for 20 years now, a couple of decades, easy, with just two entrance egress points. We can continue to be that. Kessing Ranch can continue to do the same. And I have not heard an argument that weighs that differently. So, the suggestion I would make, talking about trying to go outside the box, I don't know if this is outside the box. But if I was stuck in a room somewhere and they said, Mark, you've heard all this, you have to decide, barring somebody sharing something else that I haven't considered that would move me differently, I would suggest closing Jagla, the street formerly known as Jagel, to Dorfman Drive. I would close that to through traffic. I would arrange it in such a manner that it looked handsome, perhaps some borks on the side with some plantings, trees, or something. I would have a nice red crosswalk that you see in other places in this subdivision that really shows off this place. And I would keep it as an entrance for people walking, riding their bikes. I would have it wide enough for a group of people on bikes to be able to pass. But I think I would design it so, and I would make it legally not subject to through traffic. I would even suggest having, and the developer will not be thrilled with this, but Guy could do a very nice job, of some signage indicating the two separate neighborhoods. Perhaps something not unlike what currently just was put in in the north part of the downtown. One side facing the new subdivision of Kessing Ranch, of course, would say Kessing Ranch as you under that. Come in the other direction, it would say Hunter's Ridge. I think that that would tend to delineate, identify, and actually bring together those two neighborhoods and give good value to both of you. And hopefully, it'd be done without making a lot of changes or additional cost to the project. With that, when I look at Honor Place, I don't see the value of through traffic there. I don't even purposely really see the need for any access here. I would close that off. And if the developer is able somehow to fit in an extra building there to oversee some of the costs they are going to encumber by making these changes and the time that listening to your needs would cost them, I think that would be a good thing. And I would be supportive of that as long as it didn't impact privacy concerns for Kay and Goosey residences, any more than lots 17 or 18 do, which were both looked at to be pretty acceptable. So, that would be where I'm at right now. That's what I would recommend if I was voting on it. That's the direction I'd go. Completely different than where I thought I'd be earlier. When I look at Bullards, it's a great idea. Maybe you wind up with something like that, but here's the problem. There's an emergency response. We're talking maybe 30 seconds difference. If I have to stop there, get out of the truck, go out, and usually they're locked, find the right key, and I've done this numerous times on wildland fires, take it out of the ground, there's a good 45 seconds a minute. And that's if I'm having a good day. Sometimes those key rings are pretty long and it doesn't go that quick, folks. So, I don't know if that does anything. It does preserve the street for changes in the future, but I don't know if that's something we want. So, I have some openness if we have Bullards, but I don't think they solve really the issue terribly. And I could be talked into something more outside the box, like one-way streets or something, but I just don't see that working after we've had a chance to think about it and talk about it tonight. So, that's the direction I'd support. And I'm interested in hearing what the rest of my colleagues have to say. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Can I ask a procedural question? Since the original 2009 plan included through streets, would we have to grant some sort of change in that plan or variance? Or, because I thought, since that was already included, that was gonna be a bigger hurdle to change.
With closure, a potential closure with this amended application, the amended tentative map, we would definitely have to do, have to do a short analysis of the traffic and the other issues grading to see if there was an impact that we needed to disclose. We would definitely update the addendum for changes to the map, the sequo adendum, excuse me.
Okay.
So, to just finish that thought, so, the scope, whatever the scope of that ended up being, we may or may not need to take it back to Planning Commission. So, we would, we wouldn't be able to evaluate that until we really saw the full scope of the changes.
Okay. So, it would just potentially delay a lot of things, but would it be possible?
Yes.
Okay. Since I'm, should I already chime in with my two cents since I'm-
Go for it.
Chatting away. Okay. So, I absolutely understand the concerns and the wanting to keep the neighborhood the same way that it's been. It's, it sounds pretty idyllic, the way that it's been. And changes never appreciated. I mean, I've had numerous conversations with people about, I used to live next to an abandoned lot and it was great 'cause we could run our dogs out there. I mean, there's, there's all kinds of benefits to having undeveloped land next to you. So, but I was really looking at the project as everybody knew it was gonna be coming. They knew that there would be connections because the way the streets are set up and that it really wasn't a surprise. And the fact that we've already come down from 62 houses to 46, Dorfman's not a cut-through now anymore. I mean, there's been a lot of adjustments in acknowledging what the residents are looking for and taking into account residents' very valid concerns. I absolutely understand that. I would be in support of keeping the plan the way it is with the additional stop signs and the speed hump that was proposed in the new traffic study. And thank you for that. That was helpful to have the numbers. Because I think really, somewhere between our best expectations and the residents' worst fears is gonna be the reality. And so, I'm not trying to sugarcoat it or anything. I just really think that it would be better for people to have different, like they were saying, I'm gonna cut through the new subdivision and those folks are probably gonna cut through here. But that's gonna end up being an equal exchange, hopefully, in a best-case scenario. So, that would be my two cents on the issue is sticking with what was proposed with the changes that were also incorporated. It would be wonderful. We could all live on cul-de-sacs. But unfortunately, it wouldn't be ideal for a lot of other reasons. So, thank you.
Although I wasn't at the meeting last week, I viewed the meeting online extensively. I went back multiple times and listened to comments from all the people, listened to comments from the council members. In light of the general plan and what we've worked on for years and the goal of being- In light of the general plan and what we've worked on for years and the goal of being, having connectivity with the neighborhoods and having friends in neighborhoods that have no connectivity, I often think when you moved into Hunter's Ridge, you knew there were streets there that could potentially be opened up to another subdivision. Hunter's Ridge, in my view, is not a gated community. The thoughts that I heard from people concerning privacy and security, if there's really that fear, I think it's exaggerated and overblown. I don't think that you're going to have the significant amount of traffic that is thought that there was going to be. You certainly will have traffic, but you'll also have the opportunity to go through Kessing Ranch and the other way so that you don't necessarily have to go out on Old Red and take a left if you were going toward West Sierra or 101. The idea of going against what many of the traffic engineers and planners have been discussing for the last 20 years on the grid system and getting away from the general plan over these fears that I think that are exaggerated, I don't think is a good idea. I would support keeping Honor Place open and Dorfman open. I have two very good friends that live on Dorfman and I asked both of them specifically if they had a concern with opening those up and neither one of them did. So with that, I'm not overly thrilled about having speed bumps. As Ms. Waters indicated, they're not the best things for your cars, but if it is something that would help to mitigate the possible concerns with speeding on there, then I would be okay with that as a traffic calming device. But I think that I like the plan as presented from the staff, from Planning Commission, from Design Review and in adherence with our general plan and connectivity of the neighborhoods. So I would support keeping those open.
All right. Well, interesting perspectives coming from different angles. I like this. You know, I actually went on Sunday morning, but not too early, but it was after 10:45. I knocked on about eight different doors in the neighborhood, only one of which was answered. So I don't know if people saw me in advance and didn't want to answer or what the problem was. I didn't think I was too early. But I had a great conversation with one of the folks who was here at our last meeting two weeks ago, but not here this evening. And I totally get the perspective. As I mentioned two weeks ago, when the subdivision I live in, in the Bird section over there by Putnam Park, we were the first subdivision back in 83-ish, 84, whatever it was, 86, sorry, 86. And within a couple of years, Phase Two came in and then even subdivisions on the other side of Myrtle Avenue that used to be open. And, you know, I guess I never thought of it as being some kind of an invasion of my family's privacy at that time, yet traffic did increase. It's a no-brainer. Traffic will increase. There's more homes. There'll be more vehicles. I think there's a number of ways you can deal with people who are driving in an inappropriate fashion. We don't have anywhere near the number of stop signs that are proposed in the traffic study here. And for me personally, I would refuse to drive through this neighborhood because of all the stop signs and the speed bumps. I would absolutely stay on Old Red and get onto Valparaiso or go to my house and get onto Myrtle. So I have a tough time with kind of the discussion that, you know, there's going to be this increase in traffic. There will be an increase. How significant that remains to be seen, of course. And again, as our traffic consultant mentioned too, that, you know, we got used to it. I've been living there 30, 31 years now and I've gotten used to that flow of traffic except for the occasional speeding teenager, which we can, you know, we can challenge them in many other ways. So I kind of came in tonight, obviously, you know, we can't have any kind of a discussion about this until we're here in the public forum, but it was really troubling me. I guess the question I kept posing to myself, will this plan fail if there is no through street on Dorfman and/or Honor? And I couldn't, I couldn't come up with a good enough answer in my brain that this would fail if those streets didn't go through. I thought there were some great perspectives that were brought up tonight from staff. I really appreciate all the work staff and the developers have put out there. And I'm not, I swear to you, I'm not trying to make any additional work for anybody, but... So here I am just wavering because, you know, I look at these times, these travel time estimates and I mean, it's significantly slower when you go through the subdivision. And my God, it's a whole 20 additional seconds I have to add to my life. This is what we're arguing about is, is somebody going to spend 23 more seconds going this way or save the 23 seconds going that way? It's really sad that all of our collective lives have come down to this. I really don't think that the traffic through, should these streets go through, I don't really see the traffic being so heavy that it wouldn't be dealt with. At the same time, and I thought I was going to be all alone by myself, but the vice mayor kind of brought up some points that I wanted to bring up, and that would be to not open one or both of those through streets. I kind of saw the one at Honor just being really insignificant and the one at Dorfman maybe being more appropriate if that were open. But I kind of come into this with, I guess, a similar point that the vice mayor has brought up and that is, you know, can this subdivision work if those two streets do not go through? I could not answer that question saying, no, this won't work if those streets don't go through. I get connectivity. I think what's a really critical point, and hopefully people understand this, is the staff is guided by city policy. That policy is vetted through a public process. That means everybody in here, if you were living in the city when these policies were done, had an opportunity to come in and talk about it. And to wait to the 11th hour because now it's impacting me personally is not the best way to go about doing things. Having said that, kudos to staff for what you've done because you're following the policy that previous councils and the public have set. So I have no problems with what you've suggested. I'm just not able to justify in my mind, having heard the concerns of people, having lived through being the first subdivision and then having more subdivisions come after you, there is some level of annoyance there. You do get used to it, but I'm, I guess I'm on the side of, is there something we can do, that whole out-of-the-box thinking? I was the knucklehead that came up with the one-way street concept two weeks ago and that was using one street, like Dorfman going only one direction and Honor only going one direction. I didn't put a lot of thought into that. That was just a reaction. So we can shelve that idea for now, that's for sure. So I guess I'm kind of pushing more towards, is there a way that we can make this work without putting those streets through? Thank you.
Okay. Wow.
If we stick you with the last one.
Go ahead.
Quick comment? Because we put you right in the catbird seat, lucky mayor.
Not loading tonight, so.
But what I wanted to say, I agree with the point, this is not a surprise. And I think I've heard some of the speakers say it, so that's not tough here. We all knew a subdivision was coming. We saw the stubbed-out streets. Granted, there weren't the signs there that say that, but still, not an unreasonable expectation. But that really wasn't the biggest motivator for me. It still comes down to, and I don't know if I can, I think my colleague said it better than I did, I just, when I really weigh the value, as best I've heard it expressed of connectivity versus the benefit of the atmosphere and the benefits of that slow, friendly neighborhood, less traffic that they're currently enjoying, it seems to me there's, it's not close that there's a large mismatch. I've already said that, but I just wanted to key that difference. And I'll close by saying, the addition of bumps, stop signs, I think that does tend to help traffic, certainly, but it still strikes me, all we're really doing is just making day-to-day life more miserable for everybody, both in the existing neighborhood and in the new one with us to a degree too. If it was the only option I had, I'd do it in a minute because it does reduce, slow people down. It's miserable, that's why we slow down. But like my colleague said, if this can work without closing those two neighborhoods, if we can have a new neighborhood that's just as vibrant, happy, healthy as Hunter's Ridge currently is in Kessing Ranch, having the same connectivity they have, plenty of connectivity for people, just not needing the extra vehicular traffic, that still strikes me as an ideal direction. So that's what I want to share. I appreciate the input from everybody. I kind of think I know the direction I'd like to see, but whichever way it goes, I hope it'll work out the best for all of us in the long term. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
So very interesting perspectives. I guess what, what strikes me is looking at this picture is what happens to the streets? So in your model of not opening up, to me, this whole side of the development doesn't make sense. Because why would you have a street come up to a fence and a street? It's like somebody forgot to do something. Somebody messed up somewhere. So in my mind, the problem that I have with that, if we don't want the streets, in my mind, that whole area down there needs to get rethought because it's a complete waste of space to have a road to nowhere. A road to nowhere on both ends is really what you're ending up with. Why have those streets there? And that's kind of what I struggle with. Maybe the design could be a little bit, a little bit different. I also would really like to hear what the fire department has to say. I mean, because we're trying to look at, you know, possibly not doing it, the fire department may have a big problem with that. You know, I don't know. They're not here. I would like, I would, you know, kind of like to know how they feel about that. I've been over to the area no less than 20 or 30 times. Probably people think that I'm, you know, stalking the neighborhood. I don't know. You know, I'm surprised I haven't been turned in. I also did a whole bunch of digging because what concerned me is, here we are at this point and all of a sudden, what happened? What in the heck happened at 11:59 at night that all of a sudden people are coming out of nowhere? And I went back to 2009. I said, is this something that happened here? What changed? What did the design look like? What were the comments? What were the concerns? None of this was mentioned. That bothers me. So in general, I am concerned about this because not a lot other than lessening the design has happened, but all of a sudden, something sparked something by somebody that all of a sudden, traffic that wasn't a concern six years ago is all of a sudden a concern. I don't know whether the neighborhood somehow did their own traffic study, which no one has brought forth, well, that would be interesting. I know that the developer brought forth, you know, and did a lot more work to do that. But those are really my concerns. The fire department, a design that kind of would look kind of not right. I mean, I wouldn't, I wouldn't be opposed if the design was right. I have a problem with having a street that connects that doesn't connect. It's like we screwed up somehow, you know? Sorry. But, you know, that's what it kind of feels like. So those are kind of, I don't know what we do about that. So I'm kind of, I'm not set either way. I am concerned about traffic. I don't like speed bumps any more than anybody else does, but they definitely slow people down. I mean, I go over them a lot on Olaf. I've been up and down Lasker and Clovier. They definitely, as someone was pointed out on their shock absorbers and stuff, you, you know, definitely, it slows you down. So I don't have a set answer at this point, but I do need answers to those questions before I can make a final decision.
If it's helpful at all with it. I hear your points about a road to nowhere. We've had that with sidewalks sometimes that are halfway done. Because we're planning to compete it eventually later and that's always problematic. It just doesn't look right, even if you have plans for it. But that's not what I saw happening here. Obviously, we'd need somebody like rather talented architect they have in the staff to look at it, but what I pictured was actually something that I hope would be rather a nice focal point for the neighborhood by drawing it in somewhat here. Nice concrete planters or rock planters, trees, edges, a nice arched sign there, a nice pathway here. And this is something that announces the two neighborhoods and allows people to walk, bike paths and see each other. And it could even be set in an emergency situation, anything other than the aerial truck could probably get through there, I suppose. But it would limit through traffic. It seems to be the primary wish that we're hearing.
Okay. And that was Dorfman that he was drawing on my piece of paper, just so you guys know.
And I just ruined her piece of paper. Sorry.
That's all right. You ruined my piece of paper. Okay. So that's fine. There's no houses with driveways facing that direction. Okay? So then you move down to Honor Place. There are one, two, three houses that would have Honor Place addresses, I assume, but they're not part of Honor Place.
I was just thinking it stops here.
But you, you have three houses on a street that isn't really part of the street.
Sure.
Okay. If the street stops here because you're going to block it off.
No, no, I want to block it. It jogled, as it currently does, where it currently stops.
No, it does not.
I see what you're saying.
It stops way back here. And so you have three houses that are sort of...
There are three houses that go to Honor. We have spent four years working on this design.
I hear you.
We have followed the city regs. We have listened to staff. We have made it a much less impactful project. As city staff pointed out in the opening comments, we have an approved map where they both go through. We have tried and spent millions of dollars to get to this point. It's a little nerve-wracking to hear that at 11:59, somebody wants to change the base case that we spent an unbelievable amount of time on and multiple consultants. We've done multiple traffic studies. I don't know what else we could do to make the project better. Now, there is no question that there is a perception that we're creating more traffic. And there's, as Councilmember DeLoso points out, who's lived through it, I have also, it does create more traffic. And after you've lived there for a while, that's the way it is. We're talking about 25 trips through the stoplight at Valparaiso and Redwood during rush hour. If 10% of those people go through, 20%, 30%, we're still not at 10 more cars. I don't think 90% are going to go through. Then the question of the neighborhoods connecting and Kessing Ranch folks coming through Hunter's Ridge and Hunter's Ridge folks coming through Kessing, that was the original design long before we purchased the property. The connectivity elements in the general plan was the process that was handed to us when we said we'd like to amend the map. So I don't know what else we could do, Mayor Harvey. We have gone the extra mile. I do believe that we've had tremendous counsel from Dailene at W-Trans. She's done multiple studies. We've had our own people out there counting cars to make sure we could stand up in front of you and give you the exact numbers. I'm not too sure what our next move would be. I do believe this is a much better map. what our next move would be. I do believe this is a much better map than the map we have in our hands approved from '09.
Well, and I just, I mean, I just want to point out that we're looking, we're giving staff essentially direction here this evening, and three out of the five council members are in agreement with your plan. So, let's just be clear on that.
That's fine. No, no, I sort of get how democracy works. The point I'm trying to make is that we have tried to get all of the possible input throughout the process. And one of the things that Vice Mayor Mark Landman made very clear to us was, make sure the staff is supportive. And I think you can ask staff. We ensured they were supportive long before we came to design review, forget about planning commission. The issue here is the clock runs, we spent immense amount of money, we continue to spend money, and the problem becomes if we get kicked back to the planning commission on process, we're adding three months. We don't have that three months. We really would like to move this process forward. And I'm not too sure how much more we can do as far as redesigning roads, turning houses, somehow finding a way to get those Honor homes tied into Jagla, which by the way, I still call Jagla. So now, there's only one or two ways out. It's concerning. We felt that we had come up with a plan that would be good for the new neighborhood and good for the old neighborhood. The old neighborhood, as Councilmember Moore pointed out, is not a gated community. It was never a gated community. Those stubout roads were there when we bought the property in the early 2000s. And our whole team is a little stretched. And I just happen to be the fellow that gets to talk about it. Thanks.
Lucky you.
Well, lucky you, Mayor Harvey.
Thank you. So, where do we, now what?
It appears to me, Madam Mayor, if I may.
Certainly. You may.
That we currently have a three to two consensus to accept the existing traffic plan as it is. So, if needed, I would certainly make a motion that we direct or make a suggestion, make a suggestion that we continue along that existing path if we have a three to two support for that. I don't, I could add a lot more to it. I don't, I just don't think that we want to go against our general plan. As Councilmember Deloso indicated previously, that people have participated in this in the course throughout the year, years, multiple neighborhoods, community involvement, participation, and then to say because we've got a number of residents that are not in favor of it, that we deviate or create a variance to that. And then if you look at some of the language that we have that was presented at the beginning of the meeting, I don't see the compelling support to deviate against that, to deviate from that.
Vice Mayor, did you want to say something? You look like you want to say something.
I think there was something I wanted to say, and I got lost at the very last piece. But bottom line, to a degree, I agree with my colleague. I think that direction has to be made. And, you know, we always work to try to get to five if we can, but that doesn't always have to happen. I think, I agree, it is true. I did say, make staff happy. There was an assumption, and that's probably my bad. I know you did outreach to the people over in Feller. I think, and this is easy when you're looking in the rearview mirror, more outreach to this neighborhood might have been beneficial too. Because at the last minute, it's different than a lot of us expected we'd see. And frankly, this is it. It's not a matter of changing at the last minute or believing that some of the arguments are overstated for me. It's simply that I'm weighing the two benefits, and one is severely wanting, at least to me, and I've yet to hear a compelling reason to change that. So, if this was to be a three-two vote, I have no qualms with that, and that gives direction to move ahead. But I think respectfully to my colleagues, I remain unmoved. I think there's some flexibility to find something that might work. I could be wrong. Perhaps I'm misstating that perhaps this would be something that would destroy the whole project, and I don't want to do that. But not having those numbers, not having a spreadsheet in front of me that shows me that, that's where I'm at tonight, so.
Can you clarify that a little bit? Spreadsheet with what numbers?
Well, looking at the concern, obviously, this is very difficult for the developers who put a lot of years in this, and really honestly, I think the neighborhood recognizes this, has jumped through a lot of hoops to try and improve this project and really step up to the standards that this city has now as opposed to some years ago. And with that, I understand that this delay, any delay at this point, is really tough for them in terms of the financing question. And I knew as soon as we started looking at moving things around, oh, that's changing plans, that's expensive. That's why I was hoping there might be some value to be derived in getting more, another property on there. And without data that suggests, you know, here's the balance sheet, here's the timeline, this can't happen. I mean, that may be true, but I just don't have it in front of me right now. Other than just a general sense of that's the concern for my colleagues in the development cycle of this. So, I'm fine with going ahead and having a vote in direction. And I think we really should regardless of how the vote turns out. I think that we need to move one way or the other. So...
The city attorney has a...
Respectfully, what is agendized tonight is your evaluation of these various issues. It is not even agendized to evaluate and provide direction to staff. It's merely evaluate. That being said, staff is obviously hearing your evaluation, and I think has a sense of, at least as of this moment tonight, how each of you feel on the general issue of traffic. But I would simply caution that it is not agendized for any kind of a vote, even a straw vote or other action.
So, we've danced right up to that edge, and we've basically, at least on this particular issue, I think staff has a good sense of where we're all at. Would that be correct?
So, on the March 28th meeting, it was not agendized to vote on that project?
That meeting, it was.
It was.
So, if we have a continuance of that meeting, don't, in essence, we have the opportunity to continue that meeting and vote on that?
See, it wasn't what we have here.
The public hearing was not continued. We didn't have a date certain. In fact, as I recall, it was said at the prior meeting that there would be a new notice for a final public hearing. Tonight was, my understanding was, and the way it's agendized, was simply to have a discussion opportunity to do some further work and report back and hear some additional comment, both from the public and the developer and any consultants, so...
So, that probably explains why it was so close from the last meeting, because I thought it certainly was not a great opportunity of time. But now, I understand where we're going on that, so.
Councilor.
I think we got it.
Moore, they did us a big favor by offering us this working session.
Got it.
So that we could get direction, so we could get all the ducks in a row to come back to council and get a vote.
Okay.
And we're extremely appreciative of that.
So, I think with that, our consensus direction to staff?
No, they're just supposed to take what our feedback is and...
Right, we've gotten...
Come back with something.
We've gotten the comments we need for this item.
So, we don't have a consensus, but unofficially, there's a consensus.
We're currently chasing our tail. We need to move on to the issues of privacy and also the three issues that were brought up by the developer to look at. So, that's what we really need to be doing. I think it's pretty clear, you know, where the five of us each individually stand.
Maybe.
Traffic.
Okay. I don't know that it is.
You've had all the direction or suggestions and inputs you could hope for, and then some. You can't say we didn't deliver that.
Okay. I'm sorry, are we ready to move on then?
No, I just, I don't know where you, Councilmember Deloso said we were pretty clear on that.
Well, what we were clear on is...
Staff knows that there's four different ideas, maybe?
You know what? We needed to evaluate what was changed and what came back from two weeks ago at that meeting. We've all individually done that. We've all given our opinions of every little nook and cranny, probably to too much detail, but we've done that. And I think, I don't think there's anything more we can do this evening on that particular topic of traffic. I think we've addressed it. We've commented on what we feel is appropriate and appropriate, good, bad, indifferent. And now we need to go and address the other issues of privacy, and then the three issues brought up by the developer at the last meeting.
Unless you have any other comments on the traffic before we move on.
No, I have a concern that when staff takes the information, they're going to have multiple input on the same matter, and then come back and say, here's ABC, here's one, two, three. How will this information be compiled and ready for a future date?
Well, I think what we'll do is, number one, talk with the fire district. Secondly, talk with the applicant, get initial thoughts from them about what they've heard, and then put that all together and come back with a recommendation. The recommendation may be the same one we had before, maybe different. I just don't, I don't know yet. But we will come back to you with one recommendation.
Thank you.
Does that help?
It sure does.
Yeah, I was just going to add that, that we have a base case that we're working off of. So, unless we heard something radically different from that tonight in the majority, or, you know, by majority opinion expressed, then I think that's how we would take that discussion and move forward with it.
Thank you.
Okay. We're going to move on to another topic?
Yes. So, for the public's information, the next issues that, the following issues will be discussed. We'll first talk about privacy, and then move on to the three items that the developer would like consideration of, and those are the amount of homes that are conditioned to be solar, have solar panels installed, the amount of grading on the site, and the undergrounding of utilities. So, we'll start with the privacy issues. The grading that was done for the project along the Lund Hill, excuse me, Lund Hill Lane boundary, in essence, moved dirt from the top of that hill down to the middle of the site. So, that combined with the landscape buffer seemed to alleviate concerns on that project boundary. So, for this discussion, we're primarily discussing lots seven through 18, which border the Hunter's Ridge neighborhood. As we said in the staff report, lots eight through 11 for the moment, that is, that whole strip there that's highlighted in yellow with seven being the one at the very end to the left of the photo, the left edge of the photo. The backyards of the proposed homes for most of that stretch face the backyards of homes in the existing subdivision. So, they have a combination of large rear setbacks facing large rear setbacks. So, the distance in between those homes ranges from about 100 to 120 feet. That distance is greater than what you would have in a typical neighborhood that was built at one time where the homes were built that way from day one with backyards to backyards. It's also, which would be in this zone, 40 feet of separation. You also, if we were talking about front elevations facing front elevations, you would have about a 96-foot separation between the buildings. It's a 56-foot street right-of-way plus two 20 front yard setbacks. So, however you look at the conditions there, there's significantly more separation in this instance than there would be otherwise if the subdivision were built together, if the two neighborhoods had been built together. So, for those reasons, we did not think that privacy on those lots, on those particular lots, was a large concern. Moving down the line to lot 12, that backyard faces the side yard of, I don't want to be too familiar, but Kenny's house. Forget Kenny's last name, O'Reilly. So, it doesn't, excuse me, it doesn't face into a dwelling unit. It would have a very oblique view. So, for that reason, we also did not consider privacy issues on lot 12 to be a significant issue. This table is in the staff report, and it's reproduced here for folks to look at. This shows primarily the lots on that line, and it shows the distance in between the homes, the elevation differences between the homes, the width of the landscape buffer and the fence or fence and wall heights. And so, of these lots, as I said, we've looked already at eight through 11 and thought they were not a concern. 12, on further evaluation of its orientation and distance, thought that it was not an issue. Lots 13, well, I mean, keeping in order of the staff report, lot 18 is on the end of that row of lots closest to Honor Place. It's actually the one that is immediately adjacent to the existing home in the Hunter's Ridge subdivision. That lot is oriented with its side to the side yard of the existing house. And the elevation difference between those two is a foot and a half, and the proposed home is actually lower than the existing home. So, in a typical subdivision, the side yard separation there would range between 10 to 14 feet. In this case, there's 32 feet of separation. So, again, we eliminated that lot as a privacy concern. So, that left us with, let me back up here, that left us with primarily being concerned with lots seven and lots 13 through 17. So, lot seven is the one at the very left corner of the image, and lots 13 through 17 are the ones primarily centered around Dorfman Drive, on either side of Dorfman Drive. Let me move forward to the sightline analyses that were done, and these are also in the packet. Hopefully, folks have had a chance to look at those. Lot seven, there's 52 feet of separation between the existing and the proposed homes, nine feet of elevation difference between them. So, the proposed home will be nine feet higher than the existing home in this case. And looking at the visual impact and privacy impact, what this graphic shows you is that with the landscape buffer as proposed, it blocks any views from the proposed house to the existing house. It blocks any views of the yard and the first floor. So, the buffer obviously needs to be planted and maintained, and that was the purpose of the condition of approval to include the maintenance and care and the CCNRs of the future HOA to maintain that buffer. But the point being is that if the buffer is maintained, residents of the upper stories of the proposed house would have views only into potentially the second-story windows of the existing homes. I know that sounds frightening to people on face value, but essentially, what we're trying to show here is that the design of the landscape buffer eliminates, and this is true for all the homes on this edge, the landscape buffer eliminates... is true for all, all the homes on this edge, the landscape buffer eliminates greater potential visual impact that the elevation, that the higher elevations would bring you. So, with that landscape buffer, the fact that the houses sit higher, the proposed houses sit higher, the landscape buffer prevents that from being an impact that you would not otherwise, that would not otherwise occur in a, in a subdivision. So, I'm not articulating this very clearly, but the point being that if the subdivision were built together, in other words, the proposed subdivision, not an infill subdivision, but were all built together, you would have this same instance where upper story views may be possible into other upper story views. The lands, the creation of the landscape buffer is meant to offset that so that people can have a sense of privacy in their backyards, in their side yards, in their immediate living Just moving down the line, we don't have to spend a whole lot of time on this if folks don't want to, because the, the result is the same, the, the distances that are shown in the table are all greater than what would occur if the subdivision were built today as one. The distances are all much greater separation, and the landscape buffer prevents views into the living areas of the home that are what we look for, for privacy, and again, that's backyards and downstairs living areas. We did feel that, let me back up one, just a second. This is Mr., the situation with Mr. O'Reilly's home, where he has the situation of a side yard adjacent to the backyard of a proposed home. And, in this instance, though the elevation shows pretty clearly that his backyard is not impacted, we understood that he, he might have that sense of being, being more impacted, and so we had talked to the developers about increasing the size of trees along his property line and the property line of the other home across the street from Mr. O'Reilly, and they said that they would be happy to do that. Increasing the size at installation just means that there's additional privacy provided, that you don't have to wait for the trees to grow, so they agreed that they would happily Lot 14 backs up to the house across the street from Mr. O'Reilly, which showing on the map is the Bachem residence. Again, here, there's 40 feet, over 40 feet of separation with limited views again. This is the other house that, because these are backyard to side yard, we felt would be appropriate for enhanced landscaping. Double enhanced landscaping. And then this last section is lot 16, which if anyone is looking at the map, is the third lot over, third lot to the right of Dorfman in the proposed subdivision. This one has nearly 50 feet of separation between the buildings, has an elevation difference of just five feet, so there's, so this one does not sit that much higher than the proposed house, and again, has, due to the landscape buffer, very limited privacy impacts, in staff's opinion.
Vicki, what happened to 15?
Lot 15, lots 14 and 15, the way they're situated, they both back up to the side yard of the Bachem residence, so they have just about equal, you could replicate the, the section that I showed you for lot 14, it would be almost the same situation, it would be a larger, much larger separation of the building, just due to the design of the existing house, but the elevations would be about the same.
We'll get, we'll get to public comment on that, we'll get, we'll get there, okay. We'll get there.
And this graphic is just trying to create a sense of proportion so that people can understand the height of the landscape trees relative to at least one section of the subdivision. And then finally, we wanted to spend just a little bit of time showing the species of trees that are proposed for the buffer area. They are, they're not columnar trees, columnar-shaped trees, they are meant to be screening, they are used as screen, screening trees. All of the trees around this buffer, in the landscape buffer, being proposed as 24-inch box, excuse me, 24-inch box trees, so they will be bigger at the time of installation generally than what we would require. Our typical landscape tree is a 15-gallon, these are significantly greater than that, so they'll be more mature at the time of installation than a typical subdivision would And, again, in staff's opinion, the design of the landscape buffer mitigates the height differences or the elevation differences between the existing and the proposed homes. It was designed that way purposefully so that the higher elevation would not have an impact on the existing residence. And, again, so long as that landscape buffer is maintained by the future, future property owners, future homeowners, we did not believe that there would be privacy impacts over and above what anyone would have in a subdivision that was designed together. So, we can keep on going, or we can stop and see if the council has questions and comments about that.
So, let me just jump in real quick, before we get into the, any discussion around landscaping, we just, procedurally, we just need a little mi- a vote to extend, past 10.
So, moved?
Second. I have a motion and a second, I'm in favor. Aye. It's that time. Do you have questions?
Yes. Are there any council questions?
Just one quick, relatively quick question, first of all. I think this has been a very beneficial process, and I want to thank the developers for taking time, bringing a few additional drawings, explaining a little more to the neighborhood, I think that's been valuable for everybody. Only question I have, as we look at some of the sightlines, my understanding is we're getting bigger trees, and they'll be roughly eight feet tall when they come in, is, am I correct in that? Because as I look at the sightlines, for example, in packet page 103, and you could look, for example, actually, Mr. O'Reilly's house is perfect in section 11, at the bottom left of that page. The sightlines look acceptable, I believe, for privacy, but it seems to be based on the tree being 15 feet tall. So, my question, I guess, is if we're getting a tree that's roughly eight feet, how quickly is it going to attain that size? If it's a couple of years, that's perhaps a reasonable accommodation. If it's longer, that might be different, and I might want a bigger tree, I don't know, but I would like, that's the only question I have.
Do you have an answer? If you answer it.
I'm Paul Luteri with the Gazardo Partnership, we're the landscape architects since the beginning of time on the site. The 24-inch box trees, there'll be a variety of heights, given the different species, they should vary between like nine and 10 or 11 feet when they go in, and I would expect them to grow one to two feet a year once established, in both in height and width. So, to get to the 15-foot height, it's a couple of years.
Two, three years, you would say, roughly?
Two to three years, yeah, that's about right. And, none of the trees have 15 feet as their maximum height, that was shown as kind of a reasonable height, you know, to, that would be attained in a relatively short amount of time.
I get the sense it gets better with time for all the neighbors.
Absolutely.
Okay, well, that, that was what I wanted to hear, I would have had concerns if it was a few years past that, that might be something that's acceptable, especially given the size, we'll eventually get out of this. Thank you.
So, your only question?
Anybody else have a question? Anyone like to speak on this, Beth? Yes.
Hi, 8350 Dorfman, I'd really like to see lot 15 because our backyard goes down, it's graded, there's eight-foot difference between top and bottom, and we already have five neighbors, and the one corner of our backyard is the only part of our backyard that is private, so I would really like to see lot 15. And I'd like to make sure that the retaining wall that we put in is not impacted with any of the movement of dirt that's been proposed.
Anyone else? Okay, yes. This is where you wanted to read a letter, right? Mary Ann?
Yes. I'm Mary Ann Waters, I live across the street from the impacted properties, although any impact on their property impacts my property, value-wise and otherwise. One of the things that immediately impacted us was when the property was purchased by the developer and they similarly decided that all of the cypress trees were diseased and wiped them all out, so straight up that fence behind Honor Place was all full-groomed trees. A lot of the people who currently live here are, are talking now, weren't here in 2009, they didn't see that change takes place, but it impacted the Duramalars, it impacted the Nordquist. These are all people in lots eight, that back to lots eight, nine, 10, and 11, that I'm talking about. As noted by staff, lot seven is extremely steep, and those people are not here to speak. However, I am here on behalf of Greg Nordquist, I'm sorry.
Mary Ann, which num, which lot number is that?
The Nordquist.
Would back up to?
Back up to lots eight and nine.
Eight and nine, thank you.
And because I just spoke, well, I just emailed him, once I knew this meeting was going to happen, and it was all very quick, and I told him it's not a decision meeting, just like the flyer said, the letter said, this was just for input, so he was glad to hear that the neighbors were speaking up, and they were hoping that he would, they would communicate his concerns. So, this is not an official email to you, it was to me, so I'm going to.
Take bits and.
I'm not going to send it to you, I'm just going to let you know he's concerned, okay? So, again, Greg and Ann Nordquist, he's a geophysicist, and he works on geothermal exploration, and he's in the Philippines, and in late 2009, he was in Jakarta, Indonesia, studying the tsunami effects, so that's why he wasn't here then, but he has sent letters. We have all spoken, and we spoke about traffic, and there again, I really want to appreciate you for listening to us and for having this extra meeting. And in case you haven't heard that, we didn't feel heard before, at all, and even in the minutes of those previous meetings, they would say something like, Ms. Waters expressed her concerns about the development, nothing specific. So, when you go back and you look at that and research it, just know we have been talking about traffic and privacy from the beginning, maybe our voices weren't as loud as Feller and Lundhill residents. Okay, so, Mr. Nordquist says, "We really appreciate the heads-up from you on this development behind us. I hope that the other neighbors who back up to it will effectively argue the case that there needs to be consideration to our property. I have followed somewhat on what has been going on with that development and noted that they cut down on a number of homes, which is a good thing, but if they build two-story homes with small offsets from our property and windows that look directly into our backyard, our property value will take an immediate hit, and our desire to move back to the property we have owned for almost 23 years is lowered. The developer should be required to diminish this impact as much as possible." He does go on to mention maximizing the setback to the property and planting of privacy trees, of course, although at the last meeting, the privacy trees went from eight feet to 15 feet, and now I'm not so sure that that's exactly the way it works. The developer offered to bring them in at 15 feet, was that correct? You said you would do whatever it took.
So, the homes are impacted, you know, right, and that's what.
Right.
That is exactly what the landscape architect was pointing.
Yeah, okay, so, he said bring them in at nine to 11 feet, that's all, but anyway, the point is.
We'll, we'll, we'll let you, we'll let you have a chance.
I'm sorry, I shouldn't have, I shouldn't have looked back.
No, that's okay, that's right, we'll, we'll give Neil a chance, sir.
Okay, so, Mr. Nordquist's concerns, I mean, originally, they didn't even know these were going to be two-story homes, and our setbacks in our development are 30 feet, and these were 20 feet, I guess because somehow that wasn't a steep hill as ours, and they're on the same steep hillside as we are, so I don't know what that was about. But, in saying that there's this much space between the buildings is also a little bit of a misnomer, simply because these people brought, bought those properties with those nice big backyards, and that doesn't mean that the people behind them should be allowed to just get closer. So, I want to just put that out there, in protection of their property and the value of their property, I totally support them and their need for privacy. If that includes reducing windows, I would be all for it, thank you.
Thank you, Mary Ann. Anyone else want to speak on this? Oh, did you have some, okay, and then we'll let Neil.
I was just going to respond for Neil.
Oh, for you? Okay, all right, gotcha.
I was going to respond for Neil. I didn't, I didn't address the, the enhanced ones, which would be 36-inch box trees for the, for the lots that are, the highly impacted lots that were described, so those would be bigger trees. And again, they, they would vary probably from 12 to 15 or 16 feet at installation. Again, it depends on the specific nursery stock you get, but that's, you know, it's a couple of, three years of difference between the two box sizes for a lot of these trees, so essentially, you're taking, you're just accelerating that, that growth, so for the ones that are impacted, that's what would happen. And the other, the other ones, as I said, there's a, a range, and they were shown at 15 feet on the drawing because we thought it was a reasonable depiction of what, how it, how it would work.
Thank you. Any?
What he said.
What he said, okay, what he said. George, did you want to say something?
I'd like to make a quick comment about the process here, whether it be about privacy or about traffic. I think it's very admirable that citizens want to come forward and speak their views, and maybe even speak for the views of people who aren't here, either through an email or something like that. If they don't have the documentation for you, we just have to trust what people are saying is, is, is true. But, but I do think council needs to be careful when they're claiming to have conversations with people in neighborhoods, particularly maybe on Dorfman, at the other end of Dorfman or so forth, that, you know, these people aren't here, they're not here before you, you know, and, you know, I applaud Mr. DeLoso for going out in the morning on a Saturday or Sunday morning and canvassing the neighborhood, although in the nine o'clock in the morning, you're a pretty bright man.
11 o'clock.
I thought you said nine.
No.
Okay, well, 11 o'clock tonight would applaud you, I think that's, I thought you said nine something in the morning. But, anyway, to, to have your own observations out there, I think is, is fine, but be careful when you start thinking about bringing in testimony or opinions of people who aren't here. And then this whole issue of privacy, you know, the council's brought up issues of privacy in the past, we've had some lively discussions about it, particularly on public property, public parking lots and so forth, you know? I think sometimes it's, it's a good idea maybe to get some input from legal staff here about the whole notion of privacy and what, what is expected privacy, what's not expected, because even in the private sector here, there, if you're so confused about privacy rights on, in public parking lots, you're probably going to have a similar issue here with homes adjoining each other and so forth, because I think history shows that there's been a lot of confusion about. Because I think history shows that there's been a lot of confusion about privacy.
Thank you. Anyone else on privacy? Yes, Kenny? Come on down.
Nice to be with us at the end and the first one that comes up and talks.
Well, you know.
I just want to say and address to you guys as far as with the privacy, especially with my house in particular, I just want to say thank you. Thank you for addressing it by talking about maybe making the fence higher or adding, you know, taller trees. So I want to say thank you for that and that is fine with me. I'm happy with that as long as I can maintain that privacy. I guess the only question I have is just in regards to the species of trees, is just year-round foliage? Is that, are those trees that are going to be year-round or are you just going to be dumping every winter and it's a big mess and now I've got everyone looking at my backyard? So that would be my only recommendation to add to it would just be species that, one, are for the area, but two, that keep the foliage year-round. So, but thank you for hearing all of us, I really appreciate it.
Thank you. So come on back. The tree man.
I can answer that. Five of the six trees on the list are evergreen trees, the ones, there's a Japanese maple on there, which I think we would use very minimally along any of these privacy areas. It was really meant to be an accent tree. And even with, when you get into the nuance of it, you know, the water use calculations for it, you can't use very many of those anyway. The other trees are all drought-tall and all evergreen and all trees that'll do great in the area.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else? Neil, did you want to say anything about this? No, yes? Maybe? Okay, all right. Okay. Comments? Yes, I believe so.
I, the staff report was very complete. It was very easy to see which homes were looking into side views versus backyard views. I'm totally familiar with, you know, those are huge, incredibly tough to get a hold of and expensive trees to buy in the twenty-four, thirty-six inch boxes. So in looking at the information that was in here, it was pretty clear that they were not deciduous species. So I like everything that I've seen regarding privacy issues. Thank you for the report.
Yes, Vice Mayor.
Everybody's looking at me expecting trouble.
Not me.
I'm just going to say that I would agree. I think that always a valid concern and I think the process has worked out. A lot of the concern seems largely resolved and I'm getting the sense that we're getting, I mean, it's always difficult to do infill development, there's no two ways about it. That's never fun for a neighborhood, no matter whether it's big or small. But I think that the result we're getting is probably better than we usually see when a new neighborhood comes in next to one. So I agree with my colleague, I'm supportive of what's been done for privacy. I think they've met the mark.
I would concur with Councilmember DeLloso and Vice Mayor Landman on this one.
Okay.
No, I'd agree, it looks good and it sounds like the concerns of the residents were addressed, especially like you were saying with more, lots that were being more impacted, they were going to have the higher trees. So it looks like there was a lot of consideration. So I think it was a very good proposal.
I mean, I wish that some of the other situations that we had were as easily solved by putting bigger trees or taller walls or fences or, you know, some of the, it's all about compromise and looking for solutions. I appreciate the input of all the people. Some things are really just easier solved than other things. So I do appreciate all the work that was done. I appreciate you looking at different sized trees and setbacks and all of that. So I'm, I'm okay with this. Sounds like everybody's okay.
I think that we would all like a five-minute break, if people don't mind. Okay, are we ready?
Yes.
Almost ready? Close to being ready? Next subject.
Excuse me, yes. Now we're moving on to the requests from the developer that they had asked us to consider. The first of those is the site grading. And hopefully folks remember that the grading on the property increased over the two thousand nine approval in the proposal, in the proposed project because of the hillside regulations and the maximum height of allowable houses. So there was a significantly greater amount of soil export required for the proposal that is in front of us at this time. So the applicant has asked us to consider what would be in our land use code a minor variance to allow a height increase in the houses, which would then in turn lessen the amount of soil export that had to occur on the property. So the table that is up on the screen right now shows three alternatives, the first one being the condition that is in the map currently. So all the homes are below twenty-eight feet in height. That results in seventy-two hundred cubic yards of earthwork of, excuse me, of export. And by the applicant's estimate, that would be nine hundred single truck trips, nine hundred dump trucks of, involved in removing that dirt. The third column shows that if the trucks that were used also included a trailer, you could cut down the number of trips in half by simply having double, double the capacity. That may or may not always be true. There may be some need to have just a single truck there, but we, staff believes that it would be less than the nine hundred trips. That's the point of that last column. The second row shows what would happen if the council were to allow the heights of the houses to be increased by one foot over the twenty-eight foot limit. That would result in only forty-two hundred cubic yards of earth would reduce the truck trips by somewhere between two hundred and sixty and five hundred and twenty-five trips. And then the third line is, third row is if the council were to allow two feet above the height limit, you'd have a corresponding maximum amount of export of two thousand cubic yards and follow-on reductions in the truck trips. So quickly to point out, the lots that the applicant would propose to raise the heights on, those would be in the interior of the subdivision. I don't know if we have a quick site plan that's available, but it would be the ones that were interior. So that would be the west side of Jagla Street, the lots all along Jagla. And then the lots right along Valparaiso. So in other words, they're trying not to raise the height of the houses along Feller or the two boundaries of the project that abut existing neighborhoods. So they would raise only the interior lots. And so the, this, any, so, excuse me. A minor variance is allowed under the land use code of ten percent. So if the height limit is twenty-eight feet, the council could decide to go up at least even ten, even ten percent of that through a minor use, or excuse me, through a minor variance. That would require findings to be made by the council and I spelled those out on the slide up here. Special property circumstances such as shape, topography, or location that don't allow implementation of the development standard, inclusion of conditions of approval that are necessary to ensure that there's no grant of special privilege to the property and that the variance is consistent with the general plan. So all three of these are options that the council could approve with the final project. You could go with the height, the house heights all being compliant with the code. You could allow a one-foot height variance or you could allow even a two-foot height variance. If the houses were a single-story, I might have concerns about greater increases in height because the future owners might get, might butt up against that limit. But because the majority of these houses are two-story already, future owners won't be adding height to them, so that's not a concern for staff. It really, the, excuse me, in addition to that, the houses are, that the applicant is proposing to raise are interior to the subdivision, as I mentioned. So I don't think it would create a visual weirdity, if you will, if you're looking across the subdivision from off-site. You wouldn't, that height difference would be indiscernible, I believe, even up to two feet if you wanted to do that. So if the council is so inclined, certainly a height variance could be allowed. Staff, staff does not like to give variances on things because I believe it should be part of a public hearing. So if the council wants to do it in a public hearing, I think that would be a fine consideration. It's just that staff, we don't feel it's an appropriate decision for staff. So I can go on ahead to solar. We can cover that, want to stop to that?
Certainly. I will allow that.
So this is the football field effect. For everyone who's ever been to a football game or walked on a football field, they all are domed. They look flat, but they are in fact domed. And we spent quite a bit of time doing the calculations to ensure that we could drive the number of truck trips down, but that the actual visual effect of a foot or two feet higher would not be obvious to anyone. We're convinced it's not and I think at this point, we've got staff convinced of that too because of a new word coined tonight, weirdity. But, but we're pretty convinced we've got the calculation of the off-haul correct. And I would point out, the single truck, double truck has the same amount of wear and tear. A double truck has the same amount, same amount of wear and tear because the same amount of weight, number of wheels, et cetera, going up and down that street. Thanks, I appreciate it. Thank you, Mayor.
And did.
Just so you know how we arrived at that, those numbers of truck trips too. You know, typically a truck can hold about ten yards of material and when you're excavating, that fluffs the material up, you dump it in the truck. If you leveled it all out and compacted it in there, then you could get ten yards in that truck. They don't do that. Takes too much time and effort, you get about eight yards in the truck. You could do a tandem truck and you would be able to reduce the number of truck trips, but you'd have a heavier load going up and down. Plus you have, they have to come back. They're coming back to the site too. So that's just one trip away from the site, so you're going to double that. If you have any other questions, I'm available to.
You may be back.
Yep.
Questions? Yeah?
I have some questions for the applicant on there. So the reason why you want to have a higher, a height on homes and ask for a variance is because of the cost of trucking out the additional dirt? Is that correct?
Partially, yes.
What would be the other reason?
The other reason is that the drainage plan is easier and the, the homes, the homes that will be looking at each other would have no way of sensing that they were a foot or two foot above quote, "original grade" because the original grade's not there anymore. It's sort of a difficult code, or difficult regulation to constantly define, okay, original grade, now you're going to develop something. You have to somehow put a mark in the ground and say, okay, everything has to get measured back to that, when in fact, you want to move things around. So it's, we've spent quite a bit of time, not only with the engineers, but Guy Chambers, our architect, isn't here today, but he would explain to me, and it has numerous times, that no one can really tell the differential. And so we said, we have lots of projects where we're moving trucks around all over the country, moving dirt all over. And in the end, no one would have noticed if you just about, what they call balanced it out, spread it out like a foot or eighteen inches across the whole project. So yes, cost, I'd give that a seventy percent value, but the thirty percent is actually the look and the way it plays out on the property. Towards asking for.
Okay, so if the heights are higher, you're saying that it has a more positive effect on the drainage?
Yeah, because it drains.
So then it just runs more down into the street and less necessarily into the soil?
Yeah, because they're moving the soil around. When they move the soil around, they can put all the drainage in, in a much easier way. Okay? But the other thing, the other thing is, there's also the neighborhood effect and the environmental effect. I live on a street where they added fourteen homes past me and so every time one of these off-haul trucks went by, the whole house shook. That didn't bother me so much, I never called the city manager. I think my wife called about twenty-two times.
Yeah, but that's a temporary situation.
Oh yeah, it's episodic.
Yeah.
There's no question. No, no, there's no question. After a year, it's over.
Right.
But it's an ugly year.
Okay, so.
I mean, if you can off-haul less, that's always better, would be my profession.
Sure, sure. I'm curious on what the cost savings would be on the variances to the project.
Sure, no problem. The cost saving on the hauling off of the dirt is about two hundred thousand bucks.
Between four hundred and fifty trips and one hundred and twenty-five trips?
Between four hundred and fifty trips and zero. Between four hundred and fifty trips and one twenty-five, it's going to be about three quarters of that, about a hundred and fifty thousand.
So that's not an insignificant amount?
No, 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 it's not insignificant.
I think if the variance is appropriate to the project and is something that doesn't distract from it, it would, it would be something to consider. Thank you for answering those questions.
I appreciate it, thanks.
Just one quick question for staff, although now it's kind of morphed to kind of one and a half, I guess. But I was looking at option B when I was working through my packet and I looked at that and I, the question I had for staff was, could we find a middle ground where we're able to allow up to a foot above grade in the interior and along Valparaiso without three bad things happening? One, obviously affecting privacy concerns. And I think we have that by the location, that doesn't seem to be an issue. So I think we're good there unless somebody tells me different. I like weirdity better. I said having a poor aesthetic result that would hurt the look of the neighborhood, you know, I don't want people walking by for years, even for a worthwhile, short-term savings, I don't want something that looks out of place. I'm getting the sense that's not a problem with option B. I'm going to ask the same question about option C. Do you see that as an issue there?
I think the potential for option C to impact the lots behind, I know these lot numbers are really hard to read, but.
I told you.
The lots that are served off of the flag.
You can give me the numbers because I wrote them out large because I couldn't see them at all.
Okay. Thirty-four and thirty-five. Those would start to worry me a little bit more than anything off-site with those being raised above the backyards of Feller. So I think staff is much more comfortable with a one-foot increase, just based on no great analysis other than less is more.
And is there some flexibility if an answer to lots thirty-four and thirty-five can be addressed, some middle ground between those two, I would guess?
I'm sorry, I didn't understand. Do you mean like a foot and a half type of?
Well, just basically those two lots, instead of spreading this evenly for a, we, and I'm looking to see if developers go, no, it can't be done. Since those two, it seems like it's a very small subset of lots that might be impacted going towards option C. I'm curious if there's a way to easily. going towards option C, I'm curious if there's a way to easily move that around, just a little bit less there, and, and leave that a little bit lower.
I think I'm gonna have to ask Mr. Brown to come up. Those lots are all sort of tied together through retaining walls and street elevations, so I'd feel better if, if we got his feedback on that.
Maybe you can re, tell me your question again, so I can understand what you're asking.
Well, I'd ask staff, comfort levels in terms of a good aesthetic end result, no weirdity, as we, as we now know the term, to be as of tonight.
Yeah.
And we had a strong sense from everybody, I think, that we can attain that with option B, but I started to hear that C might do that as well. And that's what I was trying to get a feel for, and staff said potentially, but there was some concern with a few lots, most notably 34 and 35, that Jodla and Feller were mentioned. And I was wondering if there's a, since you're moving this in kind of an apex formation, relatively evenly, if one part of the apex could be a little lower? I'm just trying to get a sense if that's possible, or if it's too much extra trouble, and it's not worth a savings.
Yes, um, well, 30, 34 and 35 are probably the more problematic ones in relationship to the ones on Feller.
Mm-hmm.
Um, there, but you certainly as you can between 34 and 39 and 25, which are the upslope homes from them, there are terrace walls, there are no terrace walls between those and Feller, so terrace walls could be added and easily make up that difference. The other thing is the lots on Feller could potentially raise a little bit, not a foot, probably quarter of a foot to maybe a half a foot, because there, there's a maximum slope on the driveways, we don't wanna create really steep driveways. Um, and there's a code, the city has a code for that, too. Maximum 10%, 5% in front of the driveway, so, in front of the garage. So there is some flexibility on Feller to raise that, so if you raise the homes 34 and 35, you could offset some of that elevation difference, and you could also offset some of that elevation difference with some terracing walls.
I can see, I'm not gonna get a, a completely clear answer to that, but that's helpful to me, thank you. Thank you very much. And I guess, you, you could stay here for, I have one last point.
Let me maybe expand upon why there's this approximate one foot, approximate two feet, because in order to know exactly how much cubic yards, there's a tremendous amount of analysis that goes into that.
Right.
We've already done two analyses on two different layouts, one with Dorfman going through, one without Dorfman going through, which is a fair amount of time and effort. So it was a, a rough estimate, using the interior parcels, making sure that we kept the privacy issues related to the exterior of it.
Mm-hmm.
And so between a foot and two foot on average throughout that, and it would vary, and that's why I think Vicki said 2.8 feet would be the maximum, the 10% increase, some, most would be less, but that would be the maximum. So when we say one or two feet, we're talking about an average, over those interior parcels.
Okay.
I mean, right now, just so you have a better understanding of how this site is, you've got a knoll at the top that slopes in all directions. We're gonna drop that knoll. Down by Valpriso, it's actually in a low spot, but the way the land use code is written, the height of the building is not measured from the finished grade, it's measured from the existing grade. So if you had a 20 foot, eight-foot house, as long as you put it on existing grade, don't change the grade, you're fine, but as soon as you put any fill on that property, now you're above the maximum height.
Kind of difficult working in a lot like this, I can see that.
Yeah.
So the last question I had for staff, and this, so I, so I get a sense that at least, i- it's clear to me there's potential comfort for a Plan B, for any of these directions, the last thing, and this is obvious, but I think it's a good question to ask, any problems in terms of the lifespan of the foundation, any material weakness from building a foundation up this way, moving earth around? I, I have to ask, 'cause I'm not in the field, and it occurs to me, it could be a concern.
Uh, the, Mr. Brown's firm has provided us with a number of different soil studies, and then we would get another more specific study at the time the building applications were in. All those studies are meant to evaluate the proposed subdivision as against the soils that are out there, so they're looking at, can the design withstand, can the soil type that's out there withstand the design that is proposed? And so far, those, the results of all those studies are fine, that the design is appropriate to the soil's type.
Good, helpful. It's just a due diligence question, as a, as a layman, I have to ask, as a council member.
Yeah.
The direction I would give is just basically, since I'm not seeing any negative, and we are reducing something that's problematic for the neighborhood to some degree, as well as saving the developer a little money, 'cause God knows, I'm quite happy to make you pay more too, we've seen that earlier, so I would be open certainly to option B, and if, between the time this comes back, if there's a way to find if there's something to move that a little closer to three, and that works out, with all those key concerns that both council members, Warren and myself, mentioned, privacy concerns, aesthetic result, and, and obviously a good end result with a long lifespan, I'd be fine with that as well.
Um, i- i- if I could, Mr. Brown said something that made me stop and think about how we had presented this information, which is, we presented it as discreet options, a one, a one-foot change or a two-foot change, and what Mr. Brown was just saying is that it's gonna range between the one to two feet, so I just wanted to make that clarification, that I, I don't think at this point, we can probably guarantee that the elevations don't raise more than a foot.
I think from my personal perspective at least, and, and then I'm gonna pass this on, I'm not so concerned about whether it's a foot, or a foot and a half, because all that really matters is the end aesthetic result, how it works for the new neighbors, for the current neighborhood, how it looks from the street, and if it impacts, again, as we mentioned, privacy and things like that, which it, it looks like we've avoided that one. So that would be the only concern for me, unless there's some other reason that would be problematic, I'm, I'm not seeing the problem.
Okay, okay, thank you.
This way? Wendy?
Um, I don't really have any questions. The, I was thinking, even if it's just an average, that having an average between one and two feet, even if that pushes us closest, closer to option C, as long as we can take into account the two lots that we were discussing, that would be all right in my book.
Yes, council member to lot-
I just get a yes, that's great at this hour.
Council member to lot-
My only question is, on lot 18, since that looks at the side of the existing home off Honor, I was just wondering, I, I, I'm in, you know, I, I would be very supportive of increasing all of the lots, but in the staff report, it did refer to lots 18 through 21, those are the ones along Old Red and Valpriso, so is raising lot 18 up by whatever we decide, if that's the direction we go, what kind of an impact, even though it's a side view impact, I just thought I'd ask that question.
Yeah, that, that particular lot is the one that's in the proposal, a foot and a half below the existing home, so if we went somewhere between one to two feet higher, we'd at most end up half a foot taller, higher.
Good point, I'd forgotten that other, okay. So I'm, I'm good with whatever direction we end up going with this, we're not given direction, but whatever direction we give, that whole thing.
You've evaluated, right?
Yes, thank you.
Oh, is it my turn now?
Yes, please, Mayor.
So, um, I guess I have a little bit more general question, and that is, is this a common practice? Do we typically do this on all of our projects?
Uh, no, we don't typically. The challenge that this project has is that it is being asked to comply with the hillside ordinance, and all of those, all the issues related to grading sort of hit, come together in the hillside ordinance. So it's not typical that we would recommend a variance, and that's why we've gone this far, telling them, no, uh, no, we don't like that idea, is for that, for that very reason, is that we don't typically allow it on subdivisions, we certainly don't typically recommend it. It is a challenge that our land use code measures height from existing grade, that's definitely a challenge, and a few years ago, the council reviewed a project that had been initiate, a single-family home, that some remodel work had been initiated on it, and it ended up without permits, and it ended up over height. And the reason it was really over height is that that person, one, didn't understand he needed permits, but secondly, certainly didn't understand that we have a little bit of a quirky definition of building height, and so he, he really bought himself a problem with that. We did bring that recommendation forward for approval, because it was in an isolated situation, didn't impact neighbors, et cetera, so, no, we don't typically do it, but the topography of this site, and the hillside overlay on it is, definitely makes it bigger challenge, and I think for, for the council, it gets down to, we, how much, what is the, the trade-off there between all the export that's required, that really is not helpful to many of the other things that we're trying to accomplish, decrease neighborhood nuisances, decrease GHGs from all the truck trips, et cetera, so in this situation, it might be appropriate.
So does that, in looking at your variance thing, does that make it a special property circumstance because of the topography and the, the hillside ordinance? Is that where that would fall?
Yeah, I think this special circumstances that the property does have is that it is zoned for a density that is probably inappropriate for a property that has the hillside overlay on it. And I understand why it was probably zoned that way, because it's right there at the corner, and it's at a location where you expect to see higher densities, but it does have these follow-on impacts that come with having the hillside overlay.
Okay. I know you, Mark took a stab at the dirt and the dirt stability, and you said that there's reports about the dirt, but that's reports of the dirt today, right now. When you start moving dirt around, it's not the same, uh, let's see, I don't even know how to say this, it's not the same setting that you have today. Today, it's natural, it's compacted, it's been compacted over years, it is what it is, it's, if it was gonna move, it was gonna move, it hasn't moved. When you start taking, as was pointed out, loose dirt, and you start shoveling that all around, all of a sudden, you have a bunch of loose dirt. And I know that loose dirt moves. So are the foundations going to be built differently in these houses that are, we're talking about putting loose dirt on? That, that kind of concerns me, because I've seen personally what happens when a foundation is put on-
But the loose dirt would be compacted over and over again, right?
It's not the, it's not the same as natural dirt being there and digging out for the foundation. That, that's what I want to be assured, is that these foundations are not going to, because we do live in earthquake country, that these foundations aren't going to be moved, or do they have to be deeper, because we're putting it basically on fill, on these lots on the inside? So I need some help understanding that. We're also talking about the area down there, 20, 21, 22, 18, that's right next to the wetlands. And if we start filling in where the wetlands is, what impact will we cause by dirt, you know, moving down into the wetlands? What's gonna keep it from, you know, we have unintended consequences that happen sometimes, and will we somehow do something that will impact those wetlands? And I agree with you on 18, I don't wanna make 18 worse, when we just, I feel like we just got 18 squared away.
It is a foot and a half lower, too, so I forgot that.
Well, it is, but then you can, you know, if you get it up to 2.8 feet, could be higher, you know, then, then I guess I would say is, if we cause a problem with that, where we said it didn't need tree and wall mitigation, it may come to a point where it may need it, depending upon what gets moved there. It, we kind of ruled it out on the last discussion, we may have to rule it back in for more buffers, depending upon how that went, so.
Well, I'll take a stab at that.
Okay.
Well, from a grading standpoint, the geotechnical investigation that was done for the site identified what the existing soil conditions are, and as there is in almost all of Sonoma County, there's a, a small, a good amount of expansive soils, and there's certain methods for treating expansive soils, and certainly, those methods would include moisture conditioning, compacting them to the proper compaction for stabilizing the site for a foundation, making it suitable for a foundation. There's codes that are, that apply, that the city won't issue a building permit for if you don't follow those codes. There's a geotechnical investigation, or a, a engineer that would be on site during that compaction being done, and provide a report to the city. The city would be doing inspections during grading, to assure that the recommendations contained within that geotechnical investigation were followed through with, and that the foundations that were designed met those criteria as well. So there's a lot of safety measures in place to make sure that a home, that the site is prepped properly for one, and that the how, the foundations are designed properly to support the homes in an earthquake zone, and that structurally they're sound. In regards to the wetland, there's no home that's closer than, say, 30 feet from that particular wetland, so we've got quite a bit of a buffer to create a building path that's higher than what the existing grade is, and not affect that wetland. We are preserving the area around that wetland as a bioretention area, and so that particular wetland area is not gonna be graded at all. It can't be graded. We're, we're, we're staying away from it. But we've got plenty of-
By building up next to it?
We're not gonna build up next to, like I say, the foundations are at least 30 feet away. So let's say we raised it a foot.
Okay.
You've got 30 feet to which to transition back to that grade at the wetland.
So when you say you're spreading the dirt all over in these areas, it's not really all over in these areas?
Oh, no.
Okay, 'cause it, it makes it sound like, in all of these lots, the dirt's gonna basically get spread around, so what you're saying is it's specific spreading in certain areas?
Yeah, there's certain areas, like the wetland, and certainly existing perimeter, you try to match the existing grade. I mean, we gotta match the grade at the existing street at Valpriso, we gotta match the existing grade at Old Redwood Highway, and we gotta match the grade at Honor, so you can't raise it up, so you can't transition the street or access to those constraint areas, and certainly the wetland is one of those constraint areas where we're gonna maintain that grade, so that we don't affect that wetland.
Okay. All right. Well, I'm generally comfortable with the foot range. I get a little bit more uncomfortable when I see 2.8 feet, which as, keeps getting pointed out, I can't measure that, so it might, 2.8 feet might end up being three feet, or 3.25 feet, or, you know, so I'm more comfortable in the one to two-foot range, or one to one and a half foot range.
Um, Mayor?
Yes?
The variance is 2.8 feet, our suggestion is two.
But what I keep hearing is, oh, well, it's not an exact science, and it may be different, and it could be up to 2.8, you know, so I'm just-
We're not suggesting-
Okay, all right. I just don't want-
But we'd love to.
I, I understand that. And, and I guess what I'm saying, when it starts getting up there, I'm not comfortable. So that's where I am not comfortable.
Can I also point out that the way the land use code is written is such that the 28 feet is measured from existing grade, so if you had a home on a hillside, and the home was oriented like this, here's the top of your home, it's not, you, you offset the existing grade like this, you don't take a point along the home, you offset it.
It's actually from that point over here, not- It's actually from that point over here, not that point here.
It's actually the lower end, that, that's the worst-case scenario. So, it, it really makes it even worse in a hillside than if it was on a flat area.
So.
So, that's why I think the maximum 2.8 was used as a, as a 10% with an average of between one and two feet of fill over that area. There may be a spot where it's 2.8 at that highest point of the home from existing grade, but the average over the site would be no more than one or two feet. If, I hope that makes some sense.
Yes, but then that makes me more uncomfortable because when you say, well, some of them could be up that high, that then, you know, we could be ending up, depending upon where it's at, we could be ending up with other privacy issues. It is my only concern. So, I don't know. And, and the measuring, I'm not very comfortable with the measuring because my experience with the measuring hasn't been very good when you do this example like this type thing. They measured from the highest point and then the downslope, you have like a whole nother story.
Yeah, there were some sections shown in the tenanted map that run through the entire site that show each of the buildings and that 28-foot offset. So, if you look at some of the sections on, I think it's sheet 13 and 14, you can see how the, the homes are in relationship to that offset.
Where, where are we looking?
On sheet C12.
The council would have to have the plan sets from last meeting in front of them.
Oh, you don't have those anymore?
Oh, so sorry. All right. We don't have it in this? Oh, you have something different.
If, if you brought your plan sets from the previous meeting.
Okay, now we're on the same page.
So, a good example would be in section C.
Okay, yeah.
On sheet C13.
C13.
Where the roof line is going with the hillside.
Okay.
So, on, say, lot 29, you've got, that was a, I think those are the BMR duplexes.
Uh-huh.
And if you look at the left side, it, it's far below the offset, that dash line above it, and the right side is right at the 28 feet. So, all we're talking about doing is making that right side no more than 2.8 at the maximum. On an average, one to two feet.
Well, these are measuring the way I thought they should be measured. Houses in the, in other areas were measured from the left side and therefore, the right side ended up being much bigger.
But that's not the way the land use code.
I, I'm just saying, that's why I'm, I'm, I'm asking about this.
Yeah.
From the shortest spot or, I forget how they say it.
So, Dave, is it possible, based on your work so far, to be able to say that there would be no more max, there would be no more increase in height than two feet over the So, it's gonna vary all over the site or big variances throughout the site. Is it possible to say that in no instance would the height of the building be over a two-foot increase?
If, if that's what we wanna make as the maximum, certainly. What the exact grading quantity is that, it's probably closer to C than it is to B.
If I may?
Sure.
If there were no variance at all and it was just like it is now, is that a deal killer?
It's an additional cost to the project.
But it doesn't kill the deal.
I can't answer that question. Developer probably could.
He's the dirt man. We have to.
I, I think, well, I mean, I think I'm just, you know, I would just speculate to say that I'm hearing a general level of comfort at two, a maximum two feet. And then, you know, if anyone has any further comment on it, we'll just move on to the next subject.
I would just kind of agree with that. I think I opened the door when the description turned out to be more favorable for going past that middle ground. It looked attractive at first glance. And from what I'm hearing, it sounds if we can actually get to something that guarantees there's no more than a two-foot excess, and yet it still gets us closer to C, which is beneficial, obviously, for the residents and certainly also from the perspective of the developer. That's not lost me, but that's okay. These are all fair concerns. That strikes me as a win all the way around personally. I'd be supportive of that.
And I guess I just have one more question because of something that I think Neil said. This, we talked about the trucks and you said it'd be a year, year and a half that people would be having to put up with this. Are we?
The question in total will be a year, year and a half. The actual moving of dirt, I'm not sure exactly how long it would be, but I can tell you 900 trucks is not long.
Okay. I, I just, I wanted clarification because I didn't wanna say that we were doing it in little bits that people were gonna.
Basically, in a project like this, you might get 10, 20 of those trucks a day. 900 trucks a one day.
Okay. But we wouldn't do it, we wouldn't do it piecemeal?
No.
In other words, the site preparation would hap, happen?
That's right.
That part would be done and then we move on to whatever it is that we move on to do next?
Yeah, the sound of the concrete being poured in.
Okay. I just wanted to, clarification, 'cause you kinda threw me when you said that the trucks would be going for a year and a half. Okay.
And aren't we moving some of that dirt from different portions of that hillside to some of the lower portions?
Yeah, if you could, I know it's late and we don't wanna get up anymore, but just so we can get on the record.
So.
Yes, yes, council member Moore.
So, all of that dirt's not getting out of.
It, yeah. The top piece gets cut down and it gets pushed around in the middle.
Right.
Yes, sir.
That's very technical.
That's the part I understand.
Oh, okay. Okay, is there any public comment on this aspect? Mr. Garcia, would you like to comment on this?
No.
No? Anyone else wanna comment on this?
No.
All right, I will close public comment on this. Do you have what you need?
Yes.
Okay?
We do, thank you.
Okay. Yay, all right. Progress.
Moving on.
Moving on. Solar.
The next item is the, the solar, the solar condition of approval that requires 50% of the homes to be sold with solar panels installed. First wanna say that the council has, as with the others, has discretion over this. The, uh, to give you a context of why we made this a recommended condition of approval, the current building code, the 2016 building code requires that residential buildings be solar-ready upon construction. So, that means pre-wired and pre-plumbed for solar energy. The draft climate action plan sets a target for reducing, sets as one of its highest priority goals, the reduction of building energy use because just behind transportation, building energy is the highest producer of greenhouse gases. So, it's a high priority target within the climate action plan. The, part of that is a retro, so for residential uses, part of that is a retrofit of existing structures and Cotati's actually been doing pretty well at retrofits. We get lots and lots of solar retrofits, probably not as much as we'd like to have, but we get a steady stream of those. So, I think, I feel like we're doing pretty good. So, part of that is retrofit and part of that is new construction. Understanding that retrofit is highly variable because it depends on particular households' energy use to begin with or the cost to them of purchasing the energy. Sometimes it doesn't make sense for them to do it. Sometimes their finances don't make sense for them to do it. Sometimes they just aren't aware of it and don't make that choice. So, that target for us is lower. That target in our climate action plan is 15%. That by 2020, we would hope to have retrofit at least 15% of our existing housing stock with solar energy. For new construction, for new residential construction, we set that target significantly higher because we have the control point at the time of entitlement to require it. So, we set that target at 50%. So, again, the, the climate action plan is not adopted. We're, it's still in draft form, I think, as folks know. But we are trying, as new developments come in, to hit that target, to apply that target so that we can continue to make progress toward the 2020 goals that we set. So, that was the reason that, that we set that condition of approval at 50%. Having, as I said, the council has full discretion over that. It's not an adopted document. We are just trying to make progress with it. So, I think that's really all we had to say about it. I think the applicant would like to let us know how they would, what their preferences were, would be and how they would like to implement the condition.
Yeah, we view it as a position where we look at the neighborhood in general. So, we sent someone out to count houses and solar roofs in the entire neighborhood. Hunter's Ridge, for instance, has about 65 houses, has about five solar, five houses that are solar. That about 10%, 5 to 10% is what we're seeing on Lund Hill and also on the Faylor side. With Cotati Station, the apartment buildings that we brought to the council in October, we had a 20% requirement, which basically puts solar on the roofs of all three buildings. And we were able to not only get it designed, but get it financed and sort of figure it out. And the cost is part of the project and it looks like it makes sense. The problem with it, putting on homes as compared to the apartment buildings, is that it drives the price of each home up somewhere around $15,000. There are numerous other ways to finance, for a person buying a house, to finance a solar project through the Sonoma County version of the PACE program where they can bring in solar experts to put it on their house, get into the house for 15,000 or 20,000 dollars less, put it on the house and have the cost of the project placed on their property tax over a 20-year amortization program. So, now it's costing them about a thousand bucks a year more. We think that's a tremendous way to look at this, though we do understand that the city is trying to make progress on its climate change action plan and try to get the whole town, so to speak, to a number greater than 5 or 10%. We just feel that by putting 50% on our project, we've just raised 23 homes' costs by about $20,000 and we find it to be a pretty significant exaction. We would be more than happy to go with the same 20% that staff asked on the apartments. We think that was fair. We think this is pretty tough to swallow. So, as with other discussion points, it is a negotiation where everyone is not gonna walk away happy, nor do we expect to walk away happy. But it's, I, I, I've, I've gone through every other subdivision in Sonoma County and I can't find anyone with more than 20%. And, you know, we feel that's very fair. Thanks for even letting us talk about it. I appreciate that. Thanks.
Anybody wanna go first?
I got a question.
You can ask it.
And I don't have to go.
We'll allow that.
Matters get to do that. I like that. It just comes to mind, we're in talking about existing builds and neighborhoods and I'm taking those numbers from, they sound probably appropriate, but looking for new construction and not seeing anything like that in the county. Correct me if I'm wrong, I'm gonna ask staff, but I believe Didnot-Sepaspol, granted, they're a bit of an outlier, God bless them, but often a good one, are they not 100% for new construction?
I'm afraid I, I don't know the answer to that. They may have mandatory solar.
I'm trying to get a sense of where, where it's going in the future, too, because that's the other half of this. Certainly, what we have existing and the cost are part of the calculation, but where this is going to. So, I just wanted to ask that.
Yeah, Lori was telling me earlier in the day that she had been talking to folks about energy retrofit programs and they thought that Sebastopol did have mandatory solar, at least have a program that makes it well worthwhile to do solar on every project.
Be careful.
So, we can, we can certainly research that a little bit more before we bring the project back.
That, I just wanna make it clear, that, that makes Sebastopol subsidizing. If you folks would like to subsidize.
If you'd get me to vote in that, you'd leave happy this evening. I don't know, and I'd love to help you, but I don't know if we have the wherewithal to do that. I'm just trying to get a sense of the full range of the possibilities.
We, we had a, we had a consultant, a solar consultant, give us a chart and I will first admit, I didn't see Sebastopol even on there. I just asked Dave and he said, you know, there's a program for him that's just.
Well, and I hear, and PACE is a very good program and in some ways, it may be more cost-effective. On the other hand, I do know there's some concerns continuing with the efficacy of the feedback loop and making sure that the assessments of the properties are correct. And also, I believe that the problem that originally knocked it, there still seems to be some concerns about liens, who has the first lien. So, not that Y-Green isn't doing great across the, across the country, I recognize that.
Yeah, there's, we, we're very, we're in discussions with a firm called Clean Fund, which is a large, in essence, bank for exactly this kind of lending. And they have successfully negotiated with mortgage lenders that because they're putting it on the property tax, they are actually standing in front of the mortgage. And it's working for both retrofit and new construction. About 10% of their fund is used for new construction. We're actually engaging them in a discussion for the apartments.
Yeah, thank you.
Excellent.
Well, since I'm talking, I'll just go real quick, lay my cards on the table. It's too late to be cagey at 11:30. Obviously, Sonoma Clean Power background, you know I'm gonna be leaning this direction. But for making, I wouldn't call it an exaction, but making a request, a requirement for whatever to do business in town, I like to see it based, I like to look what it's based on. Something historical, a requirement, a law or something like that. I know that our climate action plan, I believe my understanding shows a range of about 10 to up to 20% on the high side. Now, with that, granted Cotati has less potential build-out than anybody else in the county. And to make our greenhouse gas reduction numbers, we'll need to have higher numbers. I, I see the logic of that, there's no question. But just at first glance, going from 20 to 50 seems just a little higher, at least at first reaction, than I'm comfortable with. And I thought, just a number out of my head when I sat down tonight making notes to myself, I was gonna propose 40% because I knew that would make absolutely nobody happy. And I'm looking around and seeing once again, I've accomplished that. That's twice what the high side would be. It's enough that I still, see Neil's wincing at me, so I know it's not good for everybody. But at least I have a sense of, okay, it's based on this, we're raising, we're raising it quite a bit because of the numbers we need to hit and the lack of build-out potential we have to achieve that with. But at the same time, I don't feel like I'm reaching way past that. I don't want the sense of that we're twisting arms on the developer because we have them in a position to do that. I want it based on something. That's my first reaction to it.
John?
Well, if I had my druthers, it'd be 100% solar. I'm no CPA, but when you look at what you're selling those homes for and hopefully, what I'm no CPA, but when you look at what you're selling those homes for, and hopefully what profit margins we will be available to developers, I don't think that it's a significant cost. I think the rewards of having at least 50 percent solar on there would be great. I would hope that even in that, you would include some of the moderate income and low-income homes and have the solar on there, because they're not going to have the cash to retrofit, to put a solar on there. A lot of these people, after they buy the home, are not necessarily going to go out and immediately put solar on the home. So, I think that there's a disincentive, once you're in the home, if it's not there, unless you're in a position where you are, have a greater amount of cash flow to be able to do those things. If you don't, and it's on the home at the time, it certainly adds to the cost of the home, but I think it's also going to appreciate the value of the home, because as we know, energy is not going to get less expensive. So, I would think that that would be a selling point, and I would, I would support staff's recommendation of 50 percent.
I was looking at the fact that back in 2000, only 5 percent was required, and now we're just kind of setting a goal of hoping to get 50 percent. So, I was actually okay with the 20 percent as a compromise between the original 5 percent and the 50 percent. And I also appreciate that you've agreed to the pre-wiring and plumbing portion and including that in the homes, so thank you.
20 percent, 40 percent, 50 percent, that leaves me with 30, I guess.
It's going to be an aperture somewhere.
Yeah, it's a little confusing here. We need to get on a, at least the same chapter, and I don't think we're there yet. So, I think we need to have a better recommendation, excuse me, a better personal opinion. I don't even know what to call it anymore, it's too late in the night to talk about it. Whatever it is, yeah, that thing. So, I mean.
So, the difference between 50 and 20 would be 35 percent.
That's right.
That would split the baby in half.
That's true.
Like I said, 35 percent would be ideal.
I liked 40, I could live with 35.
I like 50, 35 is better than 20.
See how powerful I can be up here?
This is good.
Damn. 35, you'd go up to 35? Do I hear 36? 36, come on. All right. I'm done.
Are you done?
I'm done.
Thank you for going out and looking at the other houses. I, I think that part of what that says is that even though there are programs out there, that people won't take advantage of them. It's unfortunate that, that they don't. I mean, I, I mean, I can say it for my own self. I don't have solar on my house, you know? It's just, it's one of those things that wish I had it. I mean, I have solar for our pool, but, but I don't have solar for everything else. But it's just one of those things, when it's included in the house, you, I think, don't think about it as much, you know, as, as with, with other things. It may not be an option that you kind of thought you'd want, but I don't think that people will turn down a specific house because it has, has solar on it, I don't think, you know? I think that, correct me if I'm wrong, Damian, but didn't PG&E help with putting solar on the habitat houses? Don't, that, don't those have? And again, I think it was along the lines that John was talking about, and that's, that, you know, for folks that really can't afford high PG&E bills, or Sonoma Clean Power bills, or the combination of both, you know, it does, it does help that. So, even for the affordable housing, it, it does help in the, in the long run for those folks. So, given that, I would love 100 percent, like you said, but I, I don't think that we really have that realistic right now. And so, I'm, I like 35, so.
Can I add something to make this helpful?
Maybe.
To help sell it, to, to not derail the ship. But I heard the concern about being able to sell these. One thing, I don't know if it's a small thing, but I think it's helpful, when you start looking at return on investment in these, in this county, these will be Sonoma Clean Power customers, they'll all be, since they, the ones that have solar at least, will be net metering customers. It's done slightly differently compared to PG&E. Instead of paying people just wholesale rates and no markup, they actually are incentivized, they pay them at retail, plus a small additional bonus of that. People make money off this. I mean, there aren't checks that you're going to go out and buy a Mercedes with every year, but they're significant, where they put about $890,000 back into the county just for net metering last year. Might be part of the sales pitch. I'm not sure how many years, what the return on investment is, could even help you hook you up with Sonoma Clean Power to figure that out, but it's one extra thing to consider, because it's helpful. People like it. Yeah, it's a little extra on the loan to get into the house, but if I'm seeing a check that very first year and every year afterwards, that's a nice thing.
Can I have a question, Madam Mayor?
Certainly. Maybe Neil will answer it.
If I can, absolutely.
In the percentage of solar, whichever number we think is appropriate, how is that divided up amongst those units?
Well, right now.
It's conceptual.
Right now, the, the condition of approval with 23, the three of the six BMRs would have it, and that would mean 20 of the 40 market rates would have it. So, if we went to 35 percent, then considering the hour, we would close at 35. I would have to do the math, but we can make it work.
But as long as it would be in proportion.
Staff is pretty insistent on that, and, and I think that's a fair view of the world.
Thank Allah.
There's some value to keeping this difficult stuff till we're all tired and beaten down.
Not my first rodeo.
No, I imagine not.
You have better stamina, I think.
Okay, so we, yeah, we.
So, do you have what you need on solar?
Yes, we do.
Okay.
Yes, we do.
Yeah, we're moving on to the next thing. Thank you, Mayor.
Moving on, thank you. Might as well stay up for this, too.
Might as well. So, telephone power poles. What we're trying to do there, what we're asking the city to consider there, is to allow us not to dig up the Redwood Highway. There's a picture here. I, I really should have Craig and Dave walk, or Damian and Dave walk you through the picture. But basically, it's all about how the poles get held up and where you underground them. And what we would like council to consider is that we would underground in front of the property, but there would still be poles at the two extremities of the property. Right now, the suggestion from the city is you've got to take those poles down, and hence you've got to dig up the street and take the poles down on the other side of the street. We'd really rather not do that. That's the, the general overview. But there's real experts here.
Nicely done, Neil.
So, this, this actually is a pretty good picture here. You see those two poles there? One of them goes across Old Redwood Highway. It comes from a pole on the other side of Old Redwood Highway to that particular pole. It's the larger one with wires up much higher. It then goes down Valprezo to the next pole down that you see, and then goes down to another pole just past Feller. So, what Neil's trying to propose is that, that pole that you see in front of the project site would stay, so that we wouldn't underground from the pole on the other side of Redwood, Old Redwood Highway to that pole. But from that pole, it would then go down the pole, be underground all the way along Valprezo, to the pole on the other side of Feller, and come back up again. Likewise, that existing pole there on the frontage that's closer to the street, the darker pole, that has a lot of dark wires going across it, that's, those are the poles that, the wires that are running up and down Old Redwood Highway. Just past the site, further down Old Redwood Highway, you can see the next pole down, that's actually right, when you, it's right in front of the northerly corner of Las Gras subdivision. We'd go down from that pole, along the frontage, up to this pole, and then back up again. And rather than going to the next pole north of the intersection of Valprezo and undergrounding under Valprezo to that next pole, and then coming back up again. So, what they're talking about doing is undergrounding everything along Old Redwood Highway frontage and Valprezo frontage, but not undergrounding under Valprezo and across Old Redwood Highway. That make sense?
Yes.
Okay.
So, yeah, these, these blue lines are the, the overhead utilities, as they exist today.
What I understand is, he's asking for this to be avoided, and then this to be avoided also, so you're right to pull here. And our, our code requires all the frontage, overhead lines to be underground, and everything on the property to be undergrounded. So, you've got to translate this being undergrounded as well as this, and this as well, but they're not, this is, you agree?
Yes. Because that pole's actually much closer to the pillar, so if you go underground here, it's just this stretch here, this stretch here.
Correct. So, can I ask a question?
Okay.
Can the.
So, the city's position, well, first, the city's position is that we like to be consistent with our municipal code, which requires undergrounding of those utilities.
Okay.
And it, and it can be done through tunneling to, you know, and, and then there's traffic control, and it's, it's not something that, that is insurmountable to, to provide traffic control during that operation.
Did Neil have something to say?
Yes, we, we're very aware it's not insurmountable. It's just extremely expensive, extremely disrupting the neighborhood. And I didn't sort of set the, the preface of the discussion up, which is, the city has very strict BMR, BMR requirements, and they're sort of non-negotiable. They are non-negotiable. And as such, we've been able to calculate exactly what that costs. It's well in excess of $1,300,000. Something like this would save us another $100,000 or so, and just make the whole picture come a whole lot closer to break even in year 17. Thank you.
So, now, can I ask my question?
Who's in question?
I don't know who it's going to be, too. Someone else can, somebody can take it. So, right now, there's two poles. Could they be one? Who's going to answer my question?
Sure, sure. Those, those poles are in close proximity, and we, there's telecommunication lines, or communication lines and power lines sharing poles all over town, so to do that would, would not be unique, except you'd still end up with a pole on a very prominent location on the project site.
Ask a quick question. Yes, she may.
Thanks. So, my confusion is, though, is why, if you're just requiring it to be underground on the frontage of the project, that would just be Valprezo and then the section of Old Redwood Highway leading up to the existing one. Why would it have to go across the street? Is that just because of where current poles are located, or because you're trying to get rid of the poles that are already on the frontage of the property?
It's the two poles on the corner that, that need to go away. In order for them to go away, the, the lines have to go underneath from across Valprezo to the next pole, and then across Old Redwood to that next pole.
So, the utilities are strung between two poles?
Right.
Yeah, the one poles on the property.
So, in order to make this development happen, we're asking them to get rid of poles that are existing and hook up to other poles across the street, so that there will be no poles in front of the frontage?
Correct.
Of their property?
Yes.
Okay.
They go underground here.
Right.
And underground here.
And, and the, as Craig's pointing out, the idea there is that the poles in the front of the property would be gone. But in order to make that happen, they have to underground to the next pole available, which is across the street.
And up the street.
Yeah.
Okay, but, and, and I get the idea of wanting to underground on the frontage of the property, it's just, it seems odd to get rid of a city existing pole in order to do it, but that's my weird see for the moment.
So, do either of you have questions?
No questions.
No questions? You have a question?
Nope.
Okay, so, I guess my feeling is I wish that there could be no poles, but the reality is when I go down there and I look up and down Old Redwood Highway, the fact is that there are poles up and down Old Redwood Highway. They, in front of Hunter's Ridge, there's a pathway, and the trees have kind of gone around, and you can't really see that there's power lines there. So, having this one be there is a little out of place, but I don't really like having two poles. I could probably live with one pole, so that everything could go up and down Old Redwood Highway and across Old Redwood Highway, but two poles would be too much for me.
Madam Mayor?
You're disrupting this now at this point.
Go ahead.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, I, I think I tried to help out with the overhaul, because I saw that as a benefit for the community, no loss for the project, and, and good for the developer. And if you can hit all of those, those are good things to get all together in one, one swoop. And I was willing to move from solar in what I wanted to be to get that same thing. This one, I, I go slightly different. I mentioned my problem with the solar, there was nothing crystal clear to base it on that I could say. This is clear as you can be in the municipal code. It's been there, it's the type of thing that should have been expected all along, it's been obviously there. Not asking to underground a pole that's not part of the project. When I first heard the concern, I thought, ooh, are we asking somebody to take a pole that's across the street, off this project, and put it underground and clean up the neighborhood? And I immediately thought, oh, I don't like that. We're putting an extra cost on the developer, that's not right. But this is just meet the standard of our code. And so, I look at it, I get the savings would be beneficial, but then the people in this neighborhood and this new division, subdivision are left with one, even if it's just one ugly pole that by our municipal code shouldn't be there forever. So, it's a short-term cost, albeit a high, high cost versus a permanent negative for the neighborhood. This is one I would lean against. If everybody else goes the other way, that's okay, but that would be my reaction to it.
And I would have agreed with you until I kind of really went out there and walked up and down and looked around. It's sort of like, this would be one section that did it, whereas everywhere else up and down Old Red, we haven't done that.
Those were older, older standards, though. If, if we were to do that, then we would hold them to everything from 10, 20, 30 years ago, and.
But even Hunter's Ridge, which is, you know, relatively.
25 years ago.
Yeah. So, that, that was really my, you know, but I could not live with two poles.
Well, I just wanted to be, I wanted to keep my record up. So far, I've confounded everybody that might have expected to count on me for something tonight, so I wanted to make sure I did a full job of equally annoying everybody, so that's, that's where I am in that one. And what the council chooses to do is fine with me. But I, I think I remain, one is not an improvement. It has the same problems as two, even though it's some good outside-the-box thinking, for me, it doesn't move me.
I just think it'll get covered up when the landscaping goes in, just like you can't see the ones down at Hunter's Ridge.
It has to be some tall trees.
Nor the ones, well, they, they, you can't see it. They have grown around all the lines, same with down the other section of Old Redwood Highway. It, it, you, they're not as noticeable as they would be and are right now, because there's nothing there.
But, but there is issues with foliage growing around power line.
Oh, yeah. Definitely, yeah, most definitely, yeah.
So, to go back to your comparison of Old Redwood Highway and then this corner of Valprezo and Old Red, and them having poles and these guys not having a pole, a lot of cars didn't have seat belts way back when, but now we know it's better to have seat belts.
True.
So, having a pole in the ground with wires above is not as good as having a pole in the ground down below. I support the exist, that plan there, where it's across Old Red, and we don't have the poles in the front, because I think, one, it's an eyesore, two, it's not efficient, and three, we've already made concessions on solar, and we've made concessions on grading. So, the money that we've helped you save should help offset the cost of these poles, and it would look a hell of a lot better. That's my position on that. Short and sweet.
And I'll throw in my two cents that I agree with the mayor, that if we could just lower it to one, it's still consistent with the highway corridor there, so I'm okay with one.
No pressure, John.
No, I feel no pressure. I would say, let's add six poles, if that's an option.
Sweet.
Can you want to put?
Where do you want them?
I would actually agree with the staff recommendation on this one, to remove the poles.
There you go. Do you have what you need?
Yes, so, the one, so, not to throw a wrinkle into this, but I just, just one thing I'll just throw out there, just for, just to think about it and see if that means anything to anybody, is we will, we very well, very well may be having the same discussion with. is we will, we very well may be having the same discussion with the next development south of Hunter's Ridge. It has a similar circumstance, at least with one of the lines of poles. So just, it's, you know, it's a smaller subdivision, so it's just something to, just something to keep in mind, I guess, is that we're going to be having this discussion again, probably. And, yeah, I'll leave it at that.
I think that's really good context because I think that that shows that two of the council members tonight are very forward-thinking on this topic. So congratulations, Councilmember Moore. There was no pressure on that one. I just wanted to throw that out there.
That's fine. I'm just trying to compromise. Is there anybody that wishes to speak on this item? Mr. Garcia, would you like to speak on this? No? Okay, then I will close public comment. The staff, all set?
I think we have everything we need, so we will reconnect with ourselves and with the applicant tomorrow and the next day and see how quickly we can turn things around to get the decision back to the council. So we appreciate all the feedback tonight and all the dedication.
And thank you for coming, everyone. I know this was long. It's late, and thank you for, I know, well, but they're done. We're not done, they're done. I see them heading out the door. Now I have to remember where we're at.
Number ten.
Yeah, item ten. And so just as a reminder, I think for our rules, we have about ten minutes left.
I just wanted to thank everyone for all the effort. I know it's been a long day, but it's been extremely helpful to the applicant. Thank you all.
We're trying to move it forward as quickly as we can, so sometimes that takes a long time.
No, I appreciate it. Thank you.
So I have no direction on future agenda items. Anyone else? Okay, so shall we move on to the consent calendar?
I know you're going to hate me, but I want to pull C.
All righty.
Unless you want to put it on a future agenda.
We can pull C. So what about A and B?
Let's move to approve items A and B on the consent calendar.
Second? I have a motion in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so item C.
Item C. The only thing I had a concern with on item C was under the recital packet, page thirty-seven, F, and talking about establishing impact fee deferral program. The dollars, the deferral can be deferred until the earlier final inspection, the date the city issues the first certificate of occupancy for the project, provided, however, that such impact fees shall not be deferred for more than two years. I think two years is a very generous exposure, and I think that if we were to come back with maybe just a year, worst-case scenario, if the economy were to tank in two years, year and a half, and not all this project is sold, we could be on the hook for some of those deferral fees. So I think the risk of a year is much more fiscally prudent.
So, I'm sorry.
And so we would probably have to go back and redo the agreement on that.
What does it state in the ordinance?
Yeah, the ordinance has two years in it, so we would have to amend the ordinance with all that involves in order to do something different on this agreement. I would point out that typical construction times these days are much slower than they used to be. Rarely does a project, well, let's take Village Walk for an example. I wouldn't be surprised if by the time they are finished, they have a two-year construction time. It's just the way they're doing things these days where they're, they'll build units and sell those units. They'll pull permits and build those units and sell those units. It's very much more an iterative process than what we were used to seeing in the past. It's harder to get financing, harder to make finance, make lenders comfortable, and so a lot of times they're having to show profits earlier date. So that's the reason for the two years is to accommodate what has become more of a normal construction schedule and sales routine.
In light of this particular project and the fact that we do have an ordinance in place, maybe we address that ordinance down the road, but I just think that that exposure for two years is greater, a greater liability that we really need to take. And if the other council members don't feel that, then, you know, I mean, I don't necessarily need to worry about on this one because it is an ordinance right now, but something that maybe we might want to look at because I don't know that I picked that up when we approved the last ordinance.
I'd move to approve item C.
I'll second that.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, that passes unanimously. So let's see.
See, it wasn't that bad.
No. So we have a public hearing?
We'll do this real, it's introduction, yeah, we'll do this real quick. In fact, it might be so quick that I will just, I don't even get to my staff report. So really what this is, is the peg fees, right? This is the public access fees that we get from video franchises, and our existing ordinance was written in a, maybe not the clearest way, as some existing state franchisees expire and renew. And so this is sort of a, you know, I don't know, Robin may have a different legal term for it, but kind of like a belt and suspenders amendment to our ordinance to make sure that as, as franchisees, state franchisees expire and renew, that we aren't sort of inadvertently kicked out of receiving peg fees from the video franchise. So it has an automatic renewal mechanism, and unless there's some positive notification from the video franchisee. So it's really kind of pretty basic. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions?
I have one question.
Okay.
Do we build in anything for cost of living? Inflation, anything?
So, no, I think it's based, there's a state law that...
Yeah.
That sets the fee.
Yeah, I don't think we have any flexibility on setting the amount of the fee. It's just one other thing just to mention briefly. In addition to doing this automatic reauthorization, the ordinance goes ahead and reauthorizes the current provider. Their license actually expired on March thirty, but I understand that recently they were granted a new state license, but we have to go ahead and approve them under our ordinance again to get the fees. So it does two things, but I agree with Damian. I don't think we have any ability to alter the fee itself.
And if we found out we could, we could always come back to this.
Exactly.
Thank you.
Like, like many things from the state, they just tell us, you get what you get, and you don't throw a fit, right?
That was my only question.
I would move to introduce an ordinance to reauthorize.
We have to have public comments.
Oh, sorry, go, go, go.
Any public comment on this item? Seeing none, I will close public comment.
I would move to introduce an ordinance to reauthorize the PEG fee and amend the Catatti municipal code to allow for automatic reauthorizations in the future.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes five-oh. We are down to appointment of library commissioner.
So just real quick, the mayor is, under, under our normal process, the mayor nominates a representative from Catatti to serve on the library commission, and in the packet there's an applicant that wants to serve in that role. At midnight, that applicant apparently is not here, but...
He was here earlier, and I think he...
For quite a while.
It's good to think probably he didn't stay until now.
Yeah. So I won't speculate, but I would assume he'd probably say, I want to serve on the...
And I believe that Vice Mayor Landman is familiar with this gentleman and...
He's an acquaintance, Madam Mayor, yes, because we live in the same neighborhoods. So I saw this, I thought I'd just add a few things because he was somewhat shy in filling this out, but I've actually seen a more full background on him for a Sonoma Clean Power committee position that he put for that hasn't opened up. But beyond what's listed here, he also is a Princeton fellow, a John Hopkins fellow, a predoctoral fellow with the Smithsonian Institute, scientist level one with the Department of Defense, article, a lot of articles, I believe at least one book, and I love to add the perfect cherry on this, U.S. Patent number four million, five hundred eighty-four, six hundred and twenty-five for capacitive tactile sensors. So I think that's a well-rounded background that actually fits for something that should be well-rounded, which is the library.
Do we think he has the background, though?
I'm going to go out on a limb and say I do.
We didn't have any more qualified candidates?
No.
And I think Mr. Kellogg expressed to me that he'd be very interested in getting more involved in the city now that he's retired and helping and things, so this is a good start.
Knowing Mr. Kellogg, I would also support that nomination.
So now, do you need to nominate and then we support your nomination? Or open a public comment? Public comment. Anyone wishing to speak on this nomination? Seeing none, we'll close public comment. I would nominate Mr. Nelson Kellogg to the Sonoma County Library Commission.
I would move to adopt a motion to approve the mayor's nomination.
I'll second that.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Seeing none, that passes five-oh.
And I think that down the road, we might want to give some sort of a thank you to Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Maybe a proclamation? Such a mean guy.
Okay, so we already did this one. City manager's report?
So I would, yes, I would just suggest, given that we're actually at midnight, that unless, I don't have anything burning to announce, other than you already announced earlier that we have strategic planning next week, but nobody's here to hear it anyway, so I would just say we skip over the reports unless there's something burning and then just move to item sixteen.
Okay. We want to skip over council reports. Does anybody have burning issues?
A very quick one, just so you know. SB six eighteen, which the city supported, did not pass out a committee because it didn't have enough votes. So thanks to everybody for your help. Not dead yet. It could come back, but it's a good start, so thank you.
All right. With that, public comment on non-action items. Anybody wishing to speak on this? Seeing none, I will close public comment on that. Information received after agenda posted. There was one item that was received. With that, I will adjourn this meeting at twelve oh-two. Thank you.